If you join us in prayer, prayer and pledge, please.
Dear God in heaven, thank you for this day in Hillsdale County, this beautiful summer weather. We ask a special blessing today on the Sheriff's Department and everyone who works there, all our sheriff deputies and everybody there. We just thank you so much for each one that put their lives on the line for us every day. We ask that you keep them safe and their families safe. And we just, we just thank you for them and the great work that they do for us. Please be with us commissioners today as we make decisions. Dear God, help us to be respectful of each other and help us to make the best decisions we can for Hillsdale County. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, we have first call out to the public. Anyone wish to address the board at this time?
I do. Good morning, folks.
Good morning.
Nice to see all of you today.
Thanks.
My name is John Leva. I am the chief steward of the Hillsdale County Sheriff's Deputy Association. And there was a couple of agenda items that got our attention on today's agenda. The one I want to speak about concerns Deputy Luthier. So I invited him here today because I wanted you guys to see the progress that he's made in his recovery. He's been working hard throughout the therapeutic process to get back to work. Clearly, that therapeutic process was interrupted outside of his control during the COVID pandemic. There's a letter of understanding that's going to be introduced, I believe, in a resolution we're going to ask that you pass to allow an extension of his time so he can continue to work harder to get back to where we all want him to be. So that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And good morning, Wes.
Good morning. Glad to see you.
Good to see you. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to take an opportunity to recognize and acknowledge an individual who retired from the Michigan Department of Treasury's Property Services Division, Louis Rogers, many of you knowing as Louis Rogers. He worked for them for over 20 years, I believe. And before that, he worked here at Hillsdale County in my position. And before that, he was a township supervisor-assessor with Vance and Township. So he had a very, what I would believe is a very unique experience throughout his working career over the last, you know, 30 years, I imagine. I didn't do the math just in my head. I kind of figured he's been in this line of work for about 30 years and he will be greatly missed. I owe him a lot for, before I came to the county, he taught me a lot about county utilization, about assessment administration. And when I was faced with kind of crossroads in my life of whether to come to the county, he was there as a, just a knowledge base that I could feed off of to determine whether this was the right move for me. And it's something that I do not regret. I owe a lot to him and I think he will be greatly missed in this line of work. And I don't think many people in Hillsdale County realize that we have such a person, you know, working for Hillsdale County. Even though he's been at the Michigan Department of Treasury for the last 20 years, you know, he was a great influence, like I say, in my department and my, and me individually. So I just wanted to recognize him because obviously in this time we didn't have, we weren't having great parties for people. He deserved it in this case, you know, when they call out on their own terms. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to recognize.
Is he still with Hillsdale County?
He still lives in Renssland Township, yes.
Does he, is he kind of interested in being a designated assessor?
I was just going to say that in about a half hour. So I don't know if that's the case, but well, you know, like I say, I hope he's not going to be a stranger. And I certainly, I consider him a friend that I've made in this line of work. And that's, I can't say that about many, I mean, not because he's not good people, don't get me wrong. But, you know, I consider him a friend and, yeah, we're not going to be strangers. And like I said, I was going to be my first question to him was, hey, would you be interested in being in the Hillsdale County as a designated assessor? So anyway, talk about that in about a half hour.
Okay, real good. Thanks, Nick. Anyone else wish to address the board at this time? We'll have another public comment at the end. Seeing none, we'll move along, consent agenda.
Move to accept the consent agenda?
I second that.
Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, correspondence is listed. Any comments on correspondence?
I have a comment. On the medical examiner's report, there's, I'm just going to speak in general terms, not specifically about this particular report. But one of the things that has to do with suicides is the cost to Hillsdale County taxpayers. When there's a suicide, now, we don't have page two in here in our correspondence. It has, we just have this today. We don't have the second page that has the breakout, but everybody got it on our email. The costs vary depending on the person and their situation. But I've seen recent suicides in Hillsdale County where the cost to Hillsdale County taxpayers for one person's suicide was $1,420 when you added up all the, all the costs that were associated with that. So as suicides increase, the cost to Hillsdale County taxpayers increase. And I think that that should be pointed out. I mean, we care, I care more, and I think most people care more about the person and the family that we don't want. We just don't want to see suicides. It's not all about the dollar. But that, that is a factor that should be pointed out. I don't think a lot of people realize that that is taxpayer dollars.
I think the real message is, is the work that you, you and Lifeways and others are doing as part of suicide prevention makes that work more important.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you, Ruth. Okay, any other comments on correspondence? Hearing none, we'll move along, the regular agenda. We need to add Nick in at 9:30 on standing order for purposes of equalization. And we will be removing the first two items under Mr. Caswell. We will be moving those to a later meeting.
Move to accept the agenda as amended?
I second that.
Any other amendments or additions or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor of the regular agenda as amended, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. So, that was good. You got Julie's number?
I do not. I didn't know that we were calling her. I've been on vacation.
Marnie was supposed to.
Nothing about that.
What's happening? Yep.
She gets her, she can wait.
Well, she's not coming. She was going to phone in, or we were going to phone her.
She, she can wait.
Yeah, text Marnie. She was, Marnie was supposed to get you the number. Because Julie's AAA's policy right now, they can't attend any person meetings.
My neck.
So she was gonna, if that's all right with you, Nick, we'll bump you up.
Hey, that's all right. Can everybody hear me okay through this?
Yeah.
Okay, if I can clarify something, Commissioner Wiley, he kind of related this to equalization. And I think it needs to be straight, but this really is not an equalization. It's kind of a, even though it's a county mandated function, it's really not necessarily, even though you look at me, I assume to be your so-called expert on these topics. But I just want to clarify that.
I appreciate that.
Okay, so I've kind of mailed you some, or emailed you some things over the last few months. And this is something that needs to be done by the end of the year or, just like anything, the state will do it for us. So it's, does anybody have any quick questions? Does anybody not even familiar with what we're talking about when we talk about the designated assessor for Hillsdale County and every county? Everybody's pretty much know the basis of what's going on? Okay, Julie's shaking her head.
I don't need to know, it's okay.
You don't either. Anyway, through property assessing reform in late 2018, legislators, through the process of basically putting local units on notice that you either need to, you know, keep your house in order or, you know, we're going to have somebody designated to do that at some point. Because the state eventually steps in and this is kind of hopefully a buffer that, like I always say, let's keep the state out of our open business as much as we can. And this has kind of been happening for that. So I just, today, I think we need to get the ball rolling on how you guys, as commissioners, want to proceed and how we identify that individual who we want to consider submitting for that role. Because it does have to be approved. You just can't submit anybody's name. And it has to be, they have to be either qualified as a Michigan Advanced Assessing Officer or a Michigan Master. So that eliminates, you know, a lot of those certified assessors. In fact, doing a quick math in my head, there's only four, I guess it becomes me, the three assessors locally that would fit that bill here in Hillsdale County if they so choose. I have talked to one or maybe a couple actually that expressed they may have interest in doing that. So I guess today I just want to know, how do you guys want to proceed with that as far as identifying that person, finding that? Because ultimately what we then have to do is submit an interlocal agreement, say that ten times fast, to all 22 assessing districts in the county that at least a majority of them have to be on board with that individual. So like I say, I think we need to start proceeding because we do have to submit that main end. Like I said, at least 12 of 22 interlocal agreements that the locals have agreed to that individual being that person. And within that interlocal government agreement, what do we want to have in that? I had a set back a couple months ago or a month ago, a template or a draft that Leland County had developed. And then just the other day, the State Tax Commission came out with one of their elements. Kind of mirrored it a lot, but there were definitely some differences between the two. So I guess that is where I will kind of leave that. I do have some things that printed off that kind of maybe will guide us through this next few months.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. I'm going to get one to supervise the western township. I think we got a person at the local level in my table. I don't mean to put me on the spot, but, you know, I think you have a potential commissioner.
I had to message Karen to tell her to check her messages.
All right, Nick, this interlocal agreement that you gave us, is that acceptable to you? You think that covers all our bases?
I prefer the Leland one myself to the state one, just because the state one kind of.
This is the state one?
Oh, that is the, yeah, that is the state one, yes.
That's the state one. You think that's the piece of garbage?
I don't think it's a piece of garbage.
You didn't say it's all right.
I think it asks for a little more detail, in particular, what I found is it's asking for you as commissioners to kind of be part of that, what is that person going to ultimately charge us for the assessing district if they ever have to utilize that person? And keep in mind, this is a five-year period. So if you set a fee today, how significant things are going to change is about to be out for. And there is a mechanism in the state, which is part of this assessing reform, that allows the local unit to pay if the assessor record is not charging or proposing an acceptable fee for that service, there is a. Make an appeal to the State Tax Commission, mediate that and come up with what they need as the appropriate fee for the service. Because it could be a various degree of things that, you know, could potentially cause the assessor record to kick in. I think our goal is to make sure the others kick in.
So this is the one you want?
I, I think that, that's the one that I did kind of edit. And like I said, I don't know if you want any kind of regional council to look it over. What I would propose, and I kind of created a draft letter and sent to Commissioner Wiley last night, sending a letter to all 22 assessing districts and asking them their opinion, what are, any thoughts they might have. Send them the draft of the interlocal government agreement and give them an opportunity to give comments.
Okay.
Because like I say, ultimately.
Give them two weeks to comment, get the comments back and then we go ahead and improve.
September 25th is the last Friday of September or something.
Yeah, but we got to get moving. And we're going to, we're going to have this in place and we're going to get the assessor in place.
Well, I picked September 25th.
They only meet once a month.
I picked September 25th because I believe that will cover the rest of the township boards in September, including Somerset, who makes the first Friday in the month. So that, that's why I picked September 25th. Look over that.
Well, I think, Mr. Chairman, I think we'd be pretty stupid not to listen to Nick. He'd get a little bridge in his little finger than most of us got in our whole head, sort of, when it comes to this assessing business. So I think we should do this immediately, send it out and give them, well, you're going to have to give them a month because townships only meet once a month. So you're going to have to give them.
And that's why in that letter, Bruce, in the second paragraph, it indicates that they need to have their responses back in by September 25th.
Okay.
So.
And then on this designated assessor, I'm, I'm just going to tell you. If you open it up to everybody, and I understand we got to open it up, but if you don't get a local person, you're going to get some fly-by-night guy or gal come running in here. And the only interest they're going to have in Hillsdale County is getting a job till they say they're a designated assessor so that they can go to Oakland County and jack their salary up and get a whole lot of money. If you get Louis Rogers to do this, that would be absolutely fantastic. He knows, he knows all the contacts up in Lansing. He knows everything about what's going on. He knows the right way to do things. He would be an absolutely wonderful person to have in this job that's designated as assessor. Now, I know we probably got to go through all the gobbledygook of posts in it and all this kind of stuff and everything. But I'm just telling you, I've seen in different townships, they hire an assessor from outside the county and they show up and they're here for about a year and a half, two years. And as soon as they get another job, it's paid a little more, they're gone. And you don't want this, this person. This person's going to have to get along with all the assessors in the county and all the townships, quite frankly. Because if the state comes in and gets a burden by it and says somebody's not doing things right, then Louis is going to have to be the one to clean up that mess. And he knows the county, he knows people, he can get along with them. And that's really important, particularly if you're putting people in this position.
But we don't even know if he's interested. And there are a couple other people that are local that might be interested.
That's fine.
So I think.
I mean, that would take my comment further than how we would feel that are just. Do you want to, do you want to put a quick RFP together? Do you just want to post it? Because it's not, I want to quickly admit that it is not a county position. It's not a, it's just a virtue of the county commissioners and the locals agreeing on that. But it's not really a department head. It's not somebody that necessarily could be, although if you write in a local agreement, that would be my next question. How accountable do you want that person to? Because I had put out from day one that anybody who signs up for this in any of the 83 counties, they are willing to put whatever on the line at any given moment throughout this, you know, foreseeable future, unless the legislation changes, that they may have to add staff or whatever to be able to do what needs to be done to get the local unit in compliance. So my thought was initially from day one, would that person require a retainer?
That person might.
Require a retainer that says, okay, if I'm going to have to be called, you know, called on at any given time, I want some kind of small compensation to know that I may have to shuffle my schedule around at any given time. So, you know, like I say, that, there may be people out there who say, no, I'll just do it and let the chips fall where they may, if the time comes. Because I make it clear that I think the goal should be never to have to utilize this person.
Well, answer me this, if, if we get a local assessor and they apply for this job, they could be overseeing themselves.
Exactly.
So if they apply for this job, they're not going to continue to be, be able to be an assessor, are they?
Sure. They just, they just don't want to be one of the ones who their unit becomes non-compliant.
What are other counties doing? Are other counties paying this person to do nothing until the world thinks so?
I have heard that there are some people proposing like a nominal $200 per unit retainer fee. That's like I say, that's just out there.
$200?
$200 per unit?
Per unit.
Per unit, huh?
So, we got, how many units?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
So, $4,400 retainer a year, but a local assessor is gonna take that, and they make a whole lot more assessing?
Well, but keep in mind, if they're recalled upon, then they're gonna kick into their usual, whatever it costs, to get that local unit in compliant. So, if three years from now, township A is finally non-compliant, and they're required to hire this assessor, that assessor, all of a sudden, you know, and I'm just throwing a number out there, don't quote me on this, but right now, I'm thinking $12 or $13 per parcel is what kind of the average rate is, the local units are paying for assessors.
Fifteen?
Twelve or thirteen, like ninety of us, much as fifteen, it just depends on the complexity of the unit.
Nick, let me ask you this, if this designated assessor gets asked to come in, it's gonna be because that township was a royally screwed up mess.
Sure.
Fifteen bucks, he ain't gonna do, he or she ain't gonna do it for 15 bucks.
That's one of the variables out there.
They're gonna have one wild mess to clean up, otherwise it wouldn't be there, right?
That's right.
That's why I'm saying, why commit to a number within this agreement, that depending on how out of line that unit is, that person might come in, and it's like, I can't, I can't make this good for this amount, so I think that needs to be between the local unit that has created the issue, and the assessor, to determine what you need to charge us to get us back in compliance. And then, from there, if the local unit doesn't agree with it, there will be an appeal process that the State Tax Commission will develop to appeal that number, so... So, like I said, these are variables that we need to discuss, that's why I'm saying, we're not here to make a decision very much in, but just think about these kind of things.
But we gotta get this, we gotta get this baby on the lever.
Yeah, that would be my recommendation, let's get the local units' opinions, first see what their thoughts are, with the knowledge that they have of this reform, what would they like to see different, what would they like to see in any kind of agreement, what would they be willing to sign, because keep in mind, we need 12 of 22 to sign this.
What would you want to expand?
Huh?
The local units?
That's up to them.
No, you said something about...
Sign, he said sign, Bruce.
Sign.
We need 12 of the 22 to sign that they're...
To sign, okay.
Yes, yes.
Between mass and here he is, I'm deftly in between.
Yeah, we...
Okay, I have a question.
Yes.
What, how many assessors are in Hillsdale County right now?
I don't think I'd be prepared for that, it was like, I wanna say 11 or 12 different assessors doing 22 jurisdictions.
Okay.
Now, if this is a county position, and it's not, then who's gonna bring us the recommendation as to who gets hired? Because we can only hire from county positions.
Now, you are, you are, by this law, the entity that will appoint that person, or submit that, I mean, we put it as, submit that name for approval, with the concurrence of at least 12 of our, in our case, 12 of 22.
Yeah, but Nick, if we put this thing out, I mean, I was an assessor for 20 years, but I've been on over for 20 years, there isn't one of us here, no offense, would have a clue whether or not the person we're talking to is giving us a line, it gotta be your...
That's where, if, trust me, I would be more than willing to give my two cents whenever that...
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea, because I, you know, what I'm trying to figure out, because the last evening, we received all the documents, and I think it gives us a starting point to, serves as a starting point to look at, and the Leland County, you know, that, I think, gives us a little idea of how to move forward, in my understanding.
And let me go back to the, as I say, if there's a potential retainer involved, I would say it would be that, okay, if you want something, you're gonna earn that money, we want an annual report, you will get all the jurisdictions' data every year, and we want you to review that, because like I say, my goal is we never use this person, and if you want a retainer fee, then every year, you're gonna review the data and let us know where you think they might, like I said, I was just thinking, maybe that's not appropriate, maybe the State Tax Commission will be, that's not appropriate, but to me, it would seem, if I were the one to do it, I would be more than willing to say, okay, give me your data, I'm gonna review it and see where you're falling short, or I'd give you the thumbs up. But that's just, like I said, that's assuming that somebody's gonna say, hey, I want to do this, but I want, you know, some kind of fee, a retainer fee, I mean...
So, so you're, this is a question, a statement, you're asking for us to post this job, you would do the interviews and bring back to us what, who you feel is the best person?
Well, I don't know that I would do, I would recommend, if you're gonna do it that way, then maybe you have either the personnel committee, because like I say, even though they're not technically a county employee, I think quasi they might be, or, you know, the committee that oversees my department, like the appropriate, either way, I don't...
Do you interview them?
Yeah.
But, but, again, no offense to anybody...
But he needs to interview them, right?
...what to ask, and they wouldn't know whether or not...
Well, if I do that, I just think that the commissioner needs to have a presence in that process.
Yeah, I think if, if the two commissioners, you know, the chair and the vice chair of, that oversee, Nick...
That's Ruth and I.
Yeah, so Ruth and Julie and Nick, the three of them conduct the interviews.
Okay.
I would even maybe go one step further, if you have somebody...
And then they, they would bring back to us your choice?
Yes.
Okay.
Maybe even go one step further, if you have a couple of township supervisors, maybe you wanna ask, or see if you can...
Nick, do we need to get going on this interview process now?
I think you need to make a decision, what route do you want to go, do you want to just do word of mouth and say, you know, or do you want to put an advertisement?
Do it formally, posted...
It needs to be done properly.
Do it formally, put it on the county website, but talk to people.
Okay.
Yeah, of course, why not?
Well, we can't, we're getting a horse ahead of, normally have to send that letter out, Nick, and I'll comment till the 25th?
Yeah, but I think you can get at least the ball rolling, you know, because you don't have to have the interlocal agreement done before you just probably...
Because at the end of the day, the townships and cities gotta do this, they don't have a choice, so they may not like some things but the agreement, but they have to do it.
Yeah.
Otherwise, the great gods of Lansing will come down and partake in pestilence and disease in their gardens.
Well, and that's why I'm kind of trying to get this ball, because I'm always big on saying, let's get it, let's get our heads together, so we don't get Lansing involved.
Well, I'm glad you did this, because I had it on my stack of stuff here, somehow I don't have to.
If I can point, do you have any comments on this subject?
My only thought would be, if you are going to send out this letter, looking, at least informing the townships, is if you could possibly prepare a FAC to go along with that, I think that you, you and your office have a great deal of respect from the townships, and I think that if you compile that information, and say, this is why we need to do it, this is the number of units that we need to have to kind of do this agreement, I think that will help the commissioners as they visit their units of government in the coming months, I think it will help them better be able to convey that message, and I think it will also develop a level of trust in what they're writing to them, so if you could do that, that would be a great...
Yeah, as part of that letter, I include, there's a checklist, the State Tax Commission is prepared to kind of guide you through this process of what you need to look for, what you need to include, and then the actual petition that we would have to fill out once that person is identified, and we have the interlocal, like I said, 12, at least 12 of 22, ideally, we'd have 22 of 22, because we want everybody on board, and I think that's...
Nick, I have a question. As to Brad's comment, I thought, I thought Brad's comment was really good, and so, if you do that, what he just said, then I think you should give the commissioners a copy of that, so that we're all on the same page, so that when we go to our township meetings, then we, you know, we're all on the same page, and we all have the same information.
Mr. Chair, if I may, one last...
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, so I, yeah, that's what I was looking at, which I had commented, no, to Nick, because there was a preparation of the description of the interlocal agreement document that we had received, and that was for that position, correct, if I may wrong, just correct me if I'm wrong, I think that is the checklist, would serve the purpose, to look for the position, the one that you had sent in email, the whole review?
Well, that was a job description.
Was it the Leland County?
And the stuff I just handed out, there's this...
Had the checklist, correct?
Checklist, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
It's the second document on what I have definitely...
Yeah, that's right, I'm looking at it right now.
I would've done it definitely, but Lyre, you met the real...
Yeah.
And I just forwarded the draft letter that, I meant to do it last night, I apologize, but the draft letter is pretty much what we discussed, sent out, so...
And there, to address Mr. Ben James' comment about a FAC, I think there's, there's plenty of you, in fact, in the letter, I, dear, I'm towards the SPC website, State Tax Commission website, there is just a market asking me to print some stuff, and I said, I said, print a lot of stuff, and a lot of it's repetitive, the quickest way is go to the website, I mean, if anybody doesn't have website access, or doesn't feel comfortable, we can certainly print them off, but I could print, the stack probably doesn't have the stuff on that website right now, and a lot of it, like I say, is repetitive, they seem to repeat the history of why this reform happened on every document, so, I'll reprint that every time. So, that's where, like I say, if you want to wait until the 25th, and then post it after that, that's, I think that's, we just have to have something submitted, I think we're gonna do this right, that we're gonna feel comfortable that whatever we submit is going to be approved, and it just has to be submitted by the senator first. I don't know then how to necessarily post it, I agree that, probably, let's wait until we get some comments back from the local units, and see what direction they may see, definitely a thing. I think we'll spend plenty of time after that, in your first meeting, I'd say, to then get something, and I'll watch something by then easily, I think it's a easily...
You'd take care of the mailing, as far as the 22 jurisdictions?
I can do that.
Okay.
Just recognize that my budget, that if I come 50 cents times 22 short, I come $11 over budget and they're posted.
Okay, and we're gonna have to figure out too, what Nick said, if there's gonna be a retainer, it ain't gonna come out of our pocket, it's gonna have to come out of the townships, if there's gonna be a retainer, or there's gonna be a, there's gonna be something, a split, I don't know what, but that needs to be considered as well, because I don't know if you can keep somebody, if you don't pay something to have them around, it's kind of like a fighter flyer, I mean, they're shut there all that time.
They're on call.
I thought, I thought that question from day one, and people looked at me like, why do they need a retainer, and I'm like, you know, you're putting your certification out there for at least a five-year period at any given time, and, but that's where I say, okay, I think a retainer might be, but if you're going to, I believe in giving some, something for your money, you know, why not make that person say, hey, we're gonna give you the data at the end of each March, you know, let us know where we stand, because hopefully, that person's goal is never to have to be utilized, just like our goal is never to have to utilize them, and I think that's the individual we need to look for that has that mentality.
I agree.
Maybe you could add in the job description as well, that part.
Yeah, that's why I say, that's, this is gonna be, as we say, a time of working document, living document, that...
Sure, actually.
Until we finalize this, is going to change.
Sounds good. Thanks, Nick.
I believe we're gonna need a motion to put this into, as far as Nick's agreed to send out the letter and get the ball rolling, and then we'll have to revisit it after we get the comments from the townships or the jurisdictions on the 25th. And actually, I don't know if that coincides with our next, or, I mean...
Our next meeting?
Uh, our meeting's the 22nd, so it'd be the first meeting in October that we'd have to revisit it.
Yep.
But, but at least the comment period is through the 25th, so, but...
And I guess something to add to that letter would be, where do you want the comments? Do you want them sent to the board's office, to the commissioners directly, to me, or...
And Nick?
Good question. Where do we have the comments?
To Nick.
When a jurisdiction comments on receiving that letter, where do we have the comments sent?
To Nick. I think they should go to Nick.
Is that all right? I mean, you're the one that put together this draft, that's all right?
I'm here for you, you guys whatever.
Let's do that, send it to Nick, because he'll know the meaning of the words, if they're, stick a word in, and it's not quite right, and so on, he'll know that, the rest of what's going on.
Sounds good.
So, I think we need a motion to, you know, have Nick send out this, what do you want?
I'll make the motion.
The letter.
And if she does, I second it.
I'll make the motion that Nick be allowed to send out the draft in your local agreement to all the assessing units, and follow up with them, and then bring that back to us in October.
Second that.
Is that, does that cover it for now?
Yeah, I mean, I think, again, I can give you guys the information as I receive it, I don't think we'll be interpreted either that way, but you don't have to wait till the October meeting to know what, what might be the concerns of all jurisdictions.
Right.
October 20th?
In the...
The second meeting in October, right?
Uh, we bring it back, again, the first meeting in October, yeah.
In the letter, it's gonna have a date to get the stuff back to its body.
September 25th, it's already in there.
And when somebody, and it's gonna happen, when somebody doesn't get it back by that time, are we going to have the cannolis to say, tough, deadline's past, this is, we're moving on?
That's right.
Because if you don't, I mean, I taught school for 30 years, if you don't say, this is the day, they're gonna wander on, and, oh gee, I didn't know about it, and so on and so forth.
I think most people understand the deadline.
It's pretty clear in the letter, I think.
Highlight it?
Pardon me?
Highlight it?
There should be a deadline.
We can highlight it, I mean, that's not that big of a deal, if you think that'd be...
It's our responsibility as commissioners, too, he's doing this with one round of meetings coming up through September when they're all gonna meet, and it's our responsibility as commissioners also to make sure, to communicate with them, and tell them, this is coming, this letter's coming, you guys need to get your feedback in by September 25th, and let them, you know, communicate with them and make sure they know they're with it.
Yep. Couple things I wanted to add, normally, when I deal with things like this, I like to send a copy to the clerk, because they're the official keepers of the record, and I also send one to the township supervisors, case of the city, I would do the city manager and the city clerk. I will also, with my permission, if you guys don't see a problem, to just send an email of a copy of anything I send to the local assessors to, for that input.
And a copy to all of us.
Sounds very responsible, yeah, that sounds promising, too.
All right, and I think we've beat it up pretty good, and I think we've got a plan.
I'm black and blue, so...
Any more, any more discussion on the motion that's on the floor? All right, all those in favor, signify, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay.
Good job, Nick.
We're on course, I guess.
And I will send everybody what I ultimately, if Commissioner Gaines and Commissioner Lyre send them the letter, if they're advised a little bit, and then send them, and then have the office.
Yeah, just holler when you want me to sign them, and I'll get them signed, so...
Okay.
Thank you, Nick, good job.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Nick.
Very good. All right, we've got a number for Julie, I shot her an email that told her we'd call shortly, and we'll get cords around here that Ruth and I can hang ourselves on, let's see if we can get this. And depending on how things go, I've got my big LifeWise meeting today, my in-dactonation, if you will, so I'm supposed to be up there to visit with Karen around noon, so if we're running a little late...
She doesn't like, don't, don't be late, because I don't want to start off on the wrong...
I've already told her, it might be a push.
She doesn't like late.
But if need be, I'll do my report, and then Julie can finish the meeting.
Good morning, speaking.
Hi, Julie, it's Jody with the Board of Commissioners, you're on speaker.
Good morning, everyone.
Hi, Julie.
Good morning, Julie.
Hi, Julie.
You have the floor.
Okay, well, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak today about the area agency uneasing, of course, we've been very busy, as we normally are during this time, but especially with the coronavirus pandemic, you know, that's added a few extra tasks to our list, but we handled them fine, so you received the report, which shows the dollars spent through July of 2020, and it does... does show the funding for the same time period for fiscal year 2019. I want to note that because of the pandemic, some of the spending isn't quite as high as it was in 2019, but that's also because of the flexibilities that coronavirus has offered, and we're working with Hillsdale Senior Center on that, and we expect that most of those dollars are going to be spent. You will notice on the second page that there were some dollars for, that we received extra because of the pandemic and the funding funds from the federal government, the family first coronavirus fund, ACT funds came through, and those were for meals. And, and you can see that those dollars are almost completely spent. And then there was some CARE Act funding that came through as well. We received a lot of guidance from the state that's funding dollars, and it was, you know, recommended that the family first dollars be spent before the CARE Act dollars, because those funds can be carried over into the next fiscal year. So with the, you know, the budget issues happening at the state level, carrying some of those funds over for the next year, we're encouraged, and we, we, you know, are doing that. So the funds are being spent. As far as services for, you know, things that affect all of our three counties, Lenawee County, Hillsdale, and Jackson, both involve some overarching services like legal aid and the nursing home establishment. So you can see the dollars there close to 69,000 that are spent between the three counties. And then as far as our caseloads and, and folks served in Hillsdale County, we're at about 111 folks for the nine-to-ic waiver program and about nine for the nursing facility transition program. And then our tiered care program is, you know, 21, 22, and 4. So things are going pretty well, just so you know, with the, the folks we serve in the county, the state guidance from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services does not allow us to do in-person visits, but we are still able to maintain contact through phone. And when folks are able, we use Zoom and other platforms to have face-to-face with folks, but we are still able to enroll folks into all of our programming. Just a quick update as how we handle the pandemic here at the Area Agency on Aging. When the pandemic case happened and then the governor's orders were to, you know, work remotely as, as much as possible, we have all of our staff working remotely except, you know, between 5:00 and 10:00 every day. We have a few teams that in the office, but everyone else is working remotely. But anybody calling our office would not notice any difference. They're still talking to people on the phone. We have, you know, real people answering our phones, and we're able to still enroll people in our programming. So that has been going pretty well. We have gotten through July around 682 referral calls from Hillsdale County residents, and then we've made referrals back out to Hillsdale County agencies like Hillsdale Senior Center. That was around 105 folks that referred back to other agencies in the community. We are continuing to help folks with the Medicare Medicaid Assistance Program, and that open enrollment time is coming up here in October, October 15th it starts. And we are working through how we're going to contact the folks that we help and counsel under Part D and Medicare decisions via phone or by Zoom, because as of right now, we're not allowed to do in-person visits. But we are going to work through that to try to make sure we can help everyone we can like we normally do during this important time of the year. We are continuing to advocate for our services and programming for older adults and adults with disabilities with our state and federal legislators, and I invite you to join me in the advocacy. We all, it's all, all of our duties to advocate for, for our seniors and our adults with disabilities, because sometimes we have to be the voice for them. So we didn't have our Older Michigans Day this year, which is the day that we gather on the lawn, but we did have another senior outreach effort where we all called and emailed our legislators and myself and Nicole Baker, OSOP planer and coordinator, had calls with all of our legislators in the, from our three counties, and they went really well. We just recently presented our area implementation plan to the county, the State Commission on Services to the Aging, last Friday, and it was adopted. That was a little different, too. Because of the pandemic, they offered many flexibilities for delivery of service through fiscal year 20, and many of those are carrying over into 21. I couldn't personally speak very long with the commissioners, but I was able to introduce myself. And then because of the, the speed necessary to get all the area plans approved from all the area agencies on aging, one of the, the staff members actually provided the plan with a brief summary, but they all got the full documentation. So anyway, so that's all great news that our plan was approved, and once we get the official letter showing the approval, we will share that approved plan with you all in the upcoming weeks. A couple of other things that happened different this year, we were able to get what was called quarantine boxes from the state as well as some produce boxes, and these were extra food items that went up to our seniors. I want to give a big thank you to Hillsdale County Senior Services Center for assisting with distribution of those boxes, but they were very popular with the senior population, and it did offer some extra food for those that are nutritionally challenged, so we were able to get those out. And unfortunately, the produce boxes are ending at the end of this month, in August. At this time, we don't know that they'll be extended, but we were thankful for the ones we did receive. The other thing that's happening at the agency is, of course, this is our budget time, and Ruth can attest to that, and thank you, Ruth, for your service under our Board of Directors. But we are working through our budget. Of course, we're, we haven't got notice from Aging Adult Services Agency on any funding cuts so far, but we are, we were told to do our budget based on approximately utilizing the funding from last year, which is what we've done. But if we get notices for any funding cuts, we are preparing for making some of those tough decisions that will be required if there are cuts. Another thing that's happening at the agency is, you know, technology is becoming more important in the community, and some of our seniors like using technology, some don't, but it is an alternative. And so we are working to do some of our, as community education, with online Zoom classes, and I actually took one myself, and it worked really well. So we know that's not a permanent solution, because we know our seniors like to gather and have that social interaction, but for now, that's one of the options that we're offering. And I think even after the pandemic, that will still be an option for some folk. We had a story of a gentleman who was on kidney dialysis and really wanted to take a class, and he couldn't, but we worked it out so that he was able to join a class via Zoom and take it while he was having a dialysis, so it was a win-win for him in that situation. We also are doing a little bit of education with providing some videos that we can share with seniors and anyone really that has questions on how to use Zoom in a kind of easy format, and we're going to be putting those out soon, because we can then share with people and help them learn how to use Zoom and, and join some classes or connect with loved ones, family, or neighbors via Zoom, so that's something else that we're doing. We did receive a large shipment of cloth masks from the state. The governor mentioned it in one of her updates last week, and we're working on a plan to get that, those masks out to community members. And I will say right along, Aging an Adult Services Agency, when they had PPD come in, we did get that, and we, we shared that with all three counties and especially our Department of Aging, so we did provide as much as we could to Hillsdale Senior Center for their use. And, and we continue to do that as we get some. We even, we did share some a couple months back, too, with the Hillsdale Medical Center, when they were having their, their trouble with the coronavirus case, and we were able to get from to them that they were in desperate need of. So anyway, any questions for me?
I have a question. This is Ruth. Hi, Julie.
Hi.
How are you doing?
I'm doing pretty good, I have to say, you know. I didn't expect a pandemic, just like anyone else, but, you know, there's a great team of staff here, and we've all worked really hard to support each other and support those community members that we serve, so I'm doing, I'm doing really well. Thank you.
Good, good. It sounds like the agency is doing really good.
Thank you.
I think we should recognize the people that are on the board that are from Hillsdale County, because everybody might not know.
Okay.
I know that obviously Ruth says he's the commissioner on the board right now, but we also have Curtis Gale, who's from Hillsdale County. He's, he's been on the board for a long time. He was on way back when I was on, so I bet he's been on for like almost 10 years. He's been on for a really long time.
You are right, Ruth, and I do want to send thank you to Curtis Gale and Ruth Cadwell. Their support has been, you know, unmeasurable through the last couple of years, and especially, you know, their solid support of the agency and the programs is really appreciated.
Who, who else is on the board from Hillsdale? And I'm thinking about the advisory board.
Okay.
You have it though, you might not know right off the top of your head.
I know there's Lester.
Oh, Les Smith.
Yeah, he is on the board.
Les Smith.
Annette, Annette Magdott is on the board.
Okay.
Hillsdale County. I can get you the list. I, I know I'm forgetting a couple of folks. We just had a new member, Yvonne, and I'm not thinking of her last name, like, I think she's from Hillsdale County, but I definitely can get you the list.
Okay.
Just so you know, our Hillsdale Senior Center council are full, and I'm so thankful of that, too, that I do get recommendations. Many times Curtis will forward when he knows there's an opening, he'll, he'll find some, someone that's interested in senior issues, and we get them on the board.
That's really good.
Advisory council.
Because for a long time, there were quite a few open seats from Hillsdale, so I'm, I'm glad to hear that they're all full.
Yeah, they are all full now, and I, I'm appreciative of that.
Good job, Julie, thank you.
Julie, this is Mark. I guess it's just more of a point of information. I don't know if you are aware, there's drive-through COVID-19 tests this Thursday in the county ISD parking lot from 2:00 to 6:00, and it's free, you just need your driver's license. The health department is basically putting that on, but it's, it's in conjunction with the National Guard, so.
Okay, well, thank you for that.
Yep.
And I do, I do want to say thank you, too, to our, our partner. You know, we've had, through this pandemic, many, many calls, almost weekly, with, with Wendy and Terry from the Hillsdale Senior Center, and working together so aggressively to make sure that we continue to provide services in the best way possible in Hillsdale County. And I, I just want to put a shout out to, to both of them and their staff for, for working closely with us through the pandemic and beyond. So thank you to them as well.
Definitely challenging times. So.
Mr. Chair, I just have a comment, if I may.
Please do.
Julie, hi, this is Namrata Karan, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. Nice to hear your voice.
Yes, and, and same here. So I just want to thank you on the annual implementation and the plan that you provided, and you talked a little bit about the CARE Act fund, and that it could be utilized, carried forward, like you said, to next year. And so a couple of things, I, I really want to quickly give a comment. Hillsdale County really does, you know, get a lot of benefits on, on, on a lot of things that's provided by primary activities, especially from the area of Hillsdale County and District Five, especially that I, you know, handle. And the AAA has been such a substantial help, and I know that you have been advocating on behalf of older adults and adults, especially with disabilities. And I have seen that, and I've heard so much as comments, and I wanted to put this as a comment from on behalf of District Five. Couple of other things that I wanted to address was that what AAA is doing in regards with identifying needs of older adults, and especially with the disabilities, I like the fact that you're developing plans and obviously that through meet through a system or in-home or community services, obviously that enables and helps maintain, you know, their, what do you call, the independence.
Yeah.
And, and, and that is so much, you know, and I like to throw in this word, give them the dignity back. I mean, you don't get to see that in so much in other countries, experts say, but what this is offering for Hillsdale County, Jackson, and Lenawee substantial is phenomenal. So but Hillsdale County, and I have heard numerous, especially the locality community that I come from in District Five, I've heard that. So thank you for that, and also the fact that I appreciate is the in-home services that are provided, you know, through your local contracts with the local service providers, and I know you do the in-home services, such as home-delivered meals and personal care. How's that going lately for you guys?
Well, thank you for bringing that up. Like, home and community-based services, you know, they've always been important, but I think it's really raised the bar in letting, and I know I've had these conversations with many community members as well as our legislators, it's really raised the bar on the need for services in the home. I mean, folks are finding that they're safer in the home, and, and we all see the stories in the news about what's happened in some of our medical care facilities and such, so those that can stay home and have services come to them have proved, you know, that's proved to be safer. And that kind of would, we haven't had a positive coronavirus case with any of the participants that we serve, so we're just trying to really keep it up. And one of the, and I'm sure you've heard about this in the news as well, one of the key concerns right now is the ability to hire direct care workers. Many of our providers are struggling with that, so we're doing what we can to help, and the state did put through extra funding to give a $2 an hour increase for direct care workers that goes through the end of September. So I think that is helping our provider keep some of their critical staff, who are essential during the pandemic, so thank you for that question.
Thank you, Julie. So with that, I conclude my comment, but I really appreciate all the counseling and outreach activities and assisting them with appeals, so that is really so much I would look forward to. So thank you on behalf of District Five.
Thank you.
Any more questions or comments? Well, Julie, I think we're done. I, I appreciate your time and look forward to you being able to come again someday.
Yeah. I'm sure it won't be that far off where I can make the journey down there to you alone personally, because I appreciate that, too. So thank you all for your support.
Julie, keep up the good work.
Thank you, Ruth.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, Julie. Goodbye.
Bye.
All right, moving right along. That brings us to committee reports. Bruce, you're up first, please.
Now, before I take off with this resolution, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I just want to touch on where we're at with yours. We've got a lot of good people here, and I want to lay out the issue. When I got this job six years ago, one of the first things that struck me was the fact. was the fact that pension plan for you folks was horribly underfunded. Then I started looking at what had happened in the past and the commissioners in the past, not us, but commissioners had always put all the money into the pension plan that they were told to put out by MERS. They put everything out. And there was a problem. And the problem was, is that MERS estimation of how much that pension plan was going to earn. And when you start drawing on your pensions, 70% of the money that you draw comes from investments for the money that was put into the plan. So if that money that's put in doesn't earn the investment, then it's going to be short. And that's basically what's happened the last 13 years. Recognizing this, okay, we had MERS down and I've been burning it up. Don't ever ask MERS to invite me to a Christmas party. It's not going to happen. And what I said to them was, you've been telling us what to put in and we've been putting it in every year. You employees are paying 14% of your pay now, over 14% of your pay in the MERS, in the retirement plan. And I can tell you quite honestly, it's still not enough. It's still short. Two years ago, this commission dumped a $150,000 extra into the pension plan because we knew it was short. And I got them to do that because we had a surplus at the end of the year, at the end of the fiscal year. And so that money was transferred and it didn't make a, quite a difference in terms of the, the funding of the pension plan. It's about 61%, 60% right now. And that's based on MERS assumptions. Now MERS has made this big deal about how they dropped their investment rate from 8%. That's what they figured the money was going to earn. And if you could make 8% of your money, I'd like to know who you're working at. They dropped it down to 7.35%. Now 1% makes a difference of about a million dollars of unfunded equity. A million bucks. Treasury came out two years ago with what they, they didn't force people to do it, but they clearly stated what should be used in terms of figuring out what these pension plans are worth. And they said you should not exceed 7% on your investment return. So MERS makes a big deal about it being at 7.35%. They're still too high. Your money that you're investing in your pension plan and that we're investing, the taxpayers' money, is not earning. So that means earning 7.35%. So that means every year we're losing a little bit. Now remember, when we have a year like 10 and 11 and 12, where we earn 1% on our investments, really what we've done is we've lost seven because they said we were going to earn eight. So we've lost that money. Now to make that up down the road, you've got to earn a whole lot more. And either that or put more money in. So that's what put me in the position of saying, first of all, you guys can't afford to continue paying 14% and it's going to go up. It's going to keep going up. I'm telling you that right now. It's going to go to 16 and 17%. I understand from the chairman that we're having a pickle of a time trying to hire young people to come into our sheriff's department because quite frankly, they can't afford 14%. Okay? And you guys can't either. And the comment has been made, I'm leaving as Commissioner, but the comment's been made with all that 14%. I don't have a problem because we're already spending that money as a company. I don't have a problem turning that up in two-year wages. Okay? But the primary thing here, and I went through this up at Lansing, I went through with the teachers' pension, I went through with the corrections officers' pension. So people who are already in the pension plan have to be given what they've promised. And you guys have been promised that you're going to have a defined benefit plan. And that's fine. And I'll defend that to the hilt. And there's been no discussion about changing that pension plan. This whole discussion is about who's going to administer and whether this county is going to get accurate information so that we know that we're properly funding your retirement. Because we need to know that. And what we know right now, we went out and hired an outside firm. And what we know right now is that we're about $135,000 short every year for the next 20 years. And so the point of what we did earlier is we said, okay, God's looking after Hillsdale County, I think, because he put this wind farm out next to me. And this wind farm that he put in is going to raise enough tax money that we're going to be able to put in $135,000 a year. We've made that commitment, this commission did. $135,000 every year for the next 20 years. All I'm after is who's ever going to administer this plan, tell us the facts. Tell us flat out where we're at. Don't use pie in the sky numbers. Use numbers that are accurate in today's world. And the problem with all this is, is you'll get somebody, numbers, as you know, figures, figures don't lie. A liar is a true figure. Okay? And you get all these numbers thrown at you and it becomes extremely confusing, to say the least. I have no desire, nor does Mark, and I can speak for him because he's told me, to change anything about this defined benefits plan that you folks currently have. Nothing changes. In fact, what I just, as the commissioners, I sent out to the independent folks who were looking at to say, can you do better than what MERS is doing? And what I put on there was the fact that, if I could read it to you here, finally, the DB plan we have now with MERS is the plan we want with you folks. No changes. Because they need to know what we want. This switch that we're proposing has nothing to do with changing the pension plan or taking anything away from the current employees who are out there. And I can tell you quite honestly, you can go back up to Lansing, we never took one thing away from current teachers. We changed it for future teachers coming in. We had a situation in Lansing with the corrections officers and I can tell you flat out, Governor Snyder wanted to take, take everything away and make everything into a 401K. And quite frankly, behind the scenes, me and Mark Jansen sat down and said, what's the problem? And the problem was, is that they were using a lot of overtime at the end. And that was increasing the pensions. And I said, well, then increase the length of time they got to work overtime. Now stop that. And it did. But leave them alone. And they've got their pension plan today. And the corrections officers were very appreciative of that. You can't take things away from people that they've been promised and that they've been told they're going to have in retirement. They plan their entire lives over that, with that assumption in mind. And you can't just rip it away from them. And I would never vote to do something like that. Okay? Now anybody who says, anybody who says that this commission or any commissioner on it wants to take away the DB plan is making a factually impaired statement. What we're after is an administrator that will accurately reflect where we're at so we know what our problem is and how much we have to fund. And we haven't had that. And that's a problem. Because not only did we get stuck with that, you guys get stuck with that because your percentage goes up. And for heaven's sakes, if I had to have 14%, and it's probably going to be 16% another year, taken out of every one of my paychecks, I don't know how you live. I don't know how you make it. And that needs to change. Now it can't change overnight. It's going to take a long time to get ourselves out of this mess. But I'm committed, and I think these commissioners are committed, to starting to put the money in that needs to be fully funded. But we weren't told by MERS that we had to put this money in. We had to go to an outside entity and pay them $7,000 to get an accurate representation of what the problem was. And so that's where we're at. Okay? And I know anytime something like this comes up with a pension, and I went through it with the teachers up at Lansing, I went through with the corrections office, it's scary. It scares the living and the jadders out of you. Because you know you're going to, you think you're going to get homes. I get that. Nobody on this board has any intention of doing that. Any intention. And if we do make the switch, if we do, and I don't know if we will or not, Mark's got to work through that and Julie's got to work through that with negotiations and everything else. But if we make the switch, all I'm saying to you is, we will finally have accurate numbers coming to us each year so we know exactly where we're at and what we have to put in, rather than the way it's been planned for the last 15 years. So that's, that's my statement in that regard. Nobody, nobody on this board wants to take anything away from what you have been promised. And the point is, we're making the effort to fund it so that you can get what you're promised. And I think that's important. Okay. This 076 is, is the resolution.
Bruce, we removed those.
No, we did not remove 076. We revert, we removed the first.
The first two were removed too.
The first two.
Resolution 20076 is to the Ottawa Board of Commissioners, we, the Board of Commissioners, recommend contracting with the firm Foster, Swift, Collins &amp; Smith to assist in the withdrawal from county defined benefit pension plan with MERS. The cost is not to exceed $7,600 respectfully submitted, Bruce Caswell.
Mark.
I just want to make a comment that this is, this is basically a follow-up to 20-60 if I recall correctly, because we did not specify a dollar amount. And we've been, Bruce and I have been conversing with Foster, Swift, so we needed to put in that dollar amount that we discussed at the last meeting. So this resolution is kind of tied in with 20-60. So, so just so everybody understands, it's, it's, it's already been voted on and passed once. But this one here, and if you, and if you go back and listen to the tape, there was some discussion at a later point about we should have had a dollar amount in that one. So this one does put the dollar amount in.
So which two did we remove?
I continue discussion and 2075.
See, and I, I had it down that's not what I wrote down.
Because what I said was the first two items.
Oh, you said the first two resolutions, I think. And that's why I wrote them by both of them.
And the reason that I flapped my jaws here earlier is because what I said doesn't have anything to do with this resolution. And I couldn't flap my jaw on this resolution.
Mr. Chair, if I may, if you're still in discussion, so isn't 20-076 kind of interconnected with the above two items that are placed today on the committee report? They're kind of connected because?
Kind of, but it's also a housekeeping issue since we already passed 20-60.
So how are we going to correct this housekeeping issue in order to correlate the other two items to be placed next time in the next meeting, sir?
I see no correlation there. Because 2060's already been passed for us to utilize Foster Swift. This puts a cap on what money we can spend.
I thought we were doing Watson Ross.
Watson Ross is.
No, that was the. Foster Swift is the law firm.
Right.
Okay, okay. Okay, that's it.
So is everybody totally confused?
Yep. It doesn't make sense. I mean, I mean, we're, they're related in my opinion.
There was discussion after the meeting last, was either last time or the week before that we needed to have a dollar amount as far as our discussions with Foster Swift. This is simply following up on that discussion that relates back to 20-60.
Which we already passed.
Yes.
To just place a dollar amount limit on the amount of money that can be spent.
Correct. But what are we spending it for? Are we spending it to, at some later stage withdrawal MERS? Is that going to be a part of that? Just for clarification.
We're spending it, we're spending it to hire the law firm. This is the law firm.
And so the law firm.
And how is the law firm going to?
These attorneys are answering all these questions that they have on how to appropriately go through the steps that we need to go through. And, and in case we do, we haven't, we haven't decided yet if we're going to withdraw from MERS. That's not been a decision yet.
And that's not on the table today.
Right. But we've got to, they're asking these attorneys all these questions and getting us the information that we need. And that's what, that's what we're paying for in this resolution.
Why are we paying the attorney to ask a question when we can sit with the union and not, and?
No, you cannot. This list of administrators was provided by the legal firm. Bruce handed out this letter to you a minute ago.
Correct.
And as Bruce just got set, done discussing, these independent administrators that are listed at the top of this email can conduct the same DB. Okay? But we need to find out what their assumptions are. And that's what Foster Swift has provided us with, is information of other administrators. MERS nor the union is going to be able to provide you names of other administrators.
But so, you know, and, and just.
With all due respect.
I, I understand, Mr. Chair, but with this approval, 20-076, now that I want to beat it too much to death, I'm just trying to figure out, our question to these list of attorneys and Foster, Swift, Collins &amp; Smith, we're asking them a question which you think MERS will not be able to answer, but yet MERS will be coming sometime in September, September 4th, September 5th, to answer certain questions that they might be able to answer. We might be able to move forward possibly with them without having an issue paying somebody so much X number amount of dollars where we can save that now and then have all of this moved to September. How about that?
Yeah, but Namu, MERS, respectfully speaking, MERS is not objective. They're not, they're not objective. They're not independent. They're going to, they're going to answer any questions towards themselves. They already haven't been given us truthful figures for years and years and years. We can't even trust them.
I, I think that.
They're not objective.
We have to give the benefit of the doubt.
No.
Because they will be coming in September. And I think so far they have given us the answers that we're, we're looking for. But I, I'm, I'm still not able to figure out what answer are you getting from, or will get from the, from Foster, Swift, Collins &amp; Smith, the answers that you can retrieve from MERS?
MERS is not objective.
I think, I think what I'm hearing you say, this $7,600 when it's approved, will not, the whole check is not going to go to Foster, Swift. It simply provides the ability to talk with Foster, Swift and get information like we did here and do other things. And when the bill is come, we'll pay them. If this thing falls through and we do not go ahead with this, Foster, Swift isn't going to get $7,600. They're only going to get the amount of money that they've billed us or whatever we asked them to do up to that point.
Okay. So if I understand you're looking, if I understand, you're looking for options for them? They're going to come with options?
Foster, Swift is a firm that if, if we decide to move ahead, they will give us clear direction as to what we have to do to follow state law. So that MERS will not come back on us down the road and say, well, you didn't do this, you didn't do that. They, they know every step to follow. That's, that's why they're being hired. Okay? If we don't, and being paid. If we don't go ahead with this and withdraw from MERS, if we decide not to do that, then they're not going to get the $7,600. Okay? Plain and simple. So this is simply putting in place the fact that as we move forward, there is a pot of money there that can be drawn on as we call, as we call Foster, Swift and discuss with them different things as we've already done. Okay? And they mentioned that, you know, we did have a contract with them yet and everything. You need, if you're going to talk to lawyers, you got to have a pot of money to pay them. So all of this $7,600 is that pot. And this $7,600 came from them. When I asked them earlier, I said, what kind of money are we talking about that we're going to have to set aside? Have you carries by hand through this process to go all the way to the end? And they, they gave us a range of estimates and this $7,600 covers that. So it's not like a check is going to be cut to them and they're going to get the whole $7,600 no matter what. It's just, it's there, we can draw on that as bills come in, we take it out of that pot if we, if we decide to approve this. I think that's what I'm hearing you concerned about. The whole $7,600 is going to be gone. And that's, that's not true.
No.
Unless you go through the whole process.
It's basically a not to exceed amount. But with that said, just so you understand, Julie and Steve, Julie Hanlon with the firm, they came down here back pre-COVID and they didn't bill us for that visibly. They've been emailing us, they've been, and when Bruce and I had the conference call last week with Julie, um we were probably on the phone for what, 45 minutes or some such? And then she followed up with some emails. She did mention that we do not have anything with them. And I think, I think we're right there at that point, that they're not going to answer no more questions until we put something in play that they can bill against.
No, MERS has been down here, Marty Daggett is MERS. And she's been down here and given us lengthy presentations earlier this year.
I, I attended all her presentations, not only here, but I went also to the sheriffs to see all of that. So I'm. to see all of that, so I'm well versed in that. But my only, like I said, my concerns are we're going forward with the approval to retain and to obviously pass the 20076, and having to figure out the other two items that are on top, that will be, you know, or re-tabling it or removing it for the next. I think in my understanding, if we can even move this to the next meeting in September, because I think, according to your email yesterday, Mr. Chair, that I understand that MERS is going to send their rep next meeting, correct?
Not at the next meeting.
Is it September 4th, September 5th, a meeting?
Our next meeting is September 8th. That meeting, in that email, Marty Daggett has agreed to meet with Jason and John and myself, and then Julie can sit in as well. But that is basically, and John's already checked with Scott Blackwell, and I know Dave's aware of it, it's an off-the-books informal meeting, but it's to keep the line of communication open, so...
Yeah, but that doesn't, that meeting doesn't have anything to do with this resolution.
It does not.
It doesn't have any...
It does not have anything to do with this resolution at all. This resolution simply is retaining the firm that we have been getting information from, which we already approved a month and a half ago in 20-60, and this just puts a dollar cap on it.
Okay.
So...
We're trying to get all of our ducks in a row in case we decide to withdraw from MERS, which we haven't made that decision yet, but we're getting our ducks in a row.
With that said, I want everybody to understand, the withdrawal from MERS, as Bruce indicated, does nothing as far as, it does, the only way that would ever take place is if the county agrees to it and the union agrees to it, and if it's identical DB plan. It's got to be identical. If there's a better administrator with lower administrative fees and better rate of return, that's what we're really talking about, because the rate of return and the administrative fees that MERS has been charging and been telling us are less than ours. And matter of fact, I've had a talk with Marty Daggett about the administrative fees, and then she tells me they're as low as they've ever been, and Julie can attest to the fact that we talked to ICMA, what, two, three years ago, and we got them to come down on their administrative fees for the 401. So these companies can come down on administrative fees, but MERS doesn't seem to be willing to. And, you know, that's money out of everybody's pocket when they're pulling administrative fees. So there's a lot of questions that have got to get answered.
And all the questions also in regards with the union contract, I just don't feel that we should be in any kind of violation to the union contract.
We're not.
If that route, that would be chosen from the Board of Commissioners to withdraw.
As a matter of fact, I know, I was on the phone before I walked in the building with Gary King, and I know for a fact he has talked to Mr. Thomas that's sitting in the back, which is one of the union reps, and he's talked to me, we're fine where we're at, we're not violating the law, so...
Well, was the conversation Gary King and I had close?
That's what Gary told me. I don't know that that's the conversation he had per se with you, but I know he's talked to you.
Yeah, he talked to me. He was trying to set something up, maybe to start negotiating in later September.
Yep.
But he didn't have any details on any of the pension stuff or anything like that that you can share.
Well, we don't have anything we can share at this point, and that's where we've been working towards, Dave, is to be able to share information with you. And I'm sure, I didn't mean to imply he had shared with you any information, but I knew it, I meant to imply that he had talked with you. But I apologize if I missed that bit, but I know, just as soon as we have information, we're going to funnel it all towards you, and he's working towards a meeting for the 14th or 15th, so he'll be in touch with you as far as a date and time.
And Commissioners, your frustration with not understanding this whole thing, don't feel bad, because when this whole thing took place up in Lansing, a lot of legislature didn't understand. Pensions are very difficult to understand, and there is a lot of fear that gets thrown into whenever you're going to change things. I know the teachers were ready to tar and feather me if we were going through the whole thing, but at the end of the day, what happened was, nobody's pension changed. New people coming in did change, but not the old people. And the corrections officers, as I said, are very happy with how things ended up. So it's not, what we're going through here is not unusual, but you've got to be methodical, you've got to work with the unions, you've got to make sure that you protect the people who are currently in the system, so that they don't get anything taken away from them, and then look at what you're going to do differently with new people coming in, if there's a willingness to look at that. So all of those things need to be taken into account, and it takes a long time to work through this process.
And I appreciate that.
This lawyer, this firm, is simply our scout, I guess if you will, if you're exploring the wilderness, our scout, we lead us through the woods, so that we don't make mistakes and bong into a tree. And that's the point of this particular resolution, so that we've got an expert that can guide us and direct us to do what we need to do if we decide to go on that route. And if we don't, then things will stay the way they are. It's not the end of the world one way or the other.
I appreciate that explanation, I really do, but one thing I feel, if I have a concern problem, whether it's the union or violation of anything is done, I'd like to talk to the people concerned. And in regard with MERS, and I know they've had two different framework that they've come, they've come here, they went to the sheriff's department, I decided to attend both of those presentations to clearly understand what it is they're presenting, understand there'll always be loopholes, but my concern today here is just one concern, that we're taking the two items, the number one, number two item. The number one item was, or the discussion and continued discussion on the update of MERS, and the second one, the resolution of 20-075, taking that off and we're putting it for some other date. But what we're doing is, we're trying to put the resolution, the very last resolution, because we want us, we want Foster and Swift, Collins to let us know which direction to go. When I look at it, why are we going that route when we can sit with this MERS, who I know, I don't want to disturb or violate the contract that we have in place with the police union. We have some time to talk about that, but the main important thing is, we want to pay this firm, the Fosters and Swift, to tell us which direction to go, when we can't get directly to the answer, where the horse's mouth will probably give us out the answer and tell us that that's what we need to do. I think, what I'm understanding is that we're going in a direction, we're not getting to hear what we want to hear, I think, from MERS. That's why, the whole, I understand that everybody's perfect, but I still feel that this could stay, and can we table this? And I know you decided not to table this last particular resolution to next month, to September, and that's okay, I don't want to beat this up too much, but I get the gist of it, and I also understand how these pension plans work, and I see issues that have been created in the past, I see it, I'm very well aware, but I just simply don't want to be in violation of any contracts that are in place currently.
Any further discussion on 20-076? Hey, now, Julie, I think we'd better do a roll call on this, please.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaines?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Caswell?
Yes.
Commissioner Carolyn?
No.
Resolution passes 4 to 1, thank you.
Okay, now Commissioners, I've handed out to you two sheets, and I think there's stuff on the backside of both of them. I wanted you to see, there were questions that came up at the last meeting about, we need to contact these people, and we need to talk to them and so on and so forth. So the one sheet that I've given you is what I emailed out to them with all the questions, everything in it, you can see exactly what was asked, okay? It's all right there. The other sheet that I got back, I got back a response from this Jack Kesco, and as you can see, he talks about the fact that, now this is Milestone Wealth is the name of this outfit. He said, "We partner with a third-party administrator, Latitude Retirement, on many of the retirement plans under our management. We provide investment services and so on and so forth. I'm working with Latitude to provide a full response to your questions below." So he said he'd get that back to me sometime this week, okay? So we'll see if that happens. Then I received a phone call from Chris Beanster, who is the president of Watkins Ross, and they work as an, they're an actuary, not an administrator, but they work with a firm called Norris Purney. And I sent this same document, a lot of questions, to Norris Purney, because that's who Foster, Swift recommended that we, those were two entities that they recommended. Chris Beanster called me to make sure that he understood everything that was going on. He got a copy of the letter I sent to Norris Purney. He then also recommended a third administrator, Investment Growth, I think was the name of him, and I said, "That's fine, go ahead and send it on to them." He is working with Norris Purney, he's also working with Investment Growth to answer those questions to send back to me as well. So what I'm, the reason I'm giving you this is, you know that we've sent everything out, we've asked our questions, okay? We'll be getting material back, and the material we get back, okay? We can judge it from there. In the meantime, Mark is apparently going to be sitting down and Julie with the unions and talking about this whole thing with them, and what's going on and so on and so forth with them. So that's basically where we're at right now in terms of what you folks gave me authorization to do the last time around. So all of that is in there. Now, I also listened to a webinar, and they had, it was done by Treasury, a Michigan Municipal Association, I'm sorry, League, but they had a whole bunch of speakers, and one of the things is that NAPERS, which is the Michigan Association of Public Employees Retirement Systems, basically they're an educational association, and they have RFP samples. So if we get to the point where in negotiations we decide to do one, we can, we could turn to these guys to get an RFP to put out to these entities that we're asking questions of right now, okay? So that's good to know. Secondly, there was Samantha Zinnies from MSU Extensions, and she's the one that brought up the fact, she said, "The assumed rate of return is capped at 7%." Now, that's kind of a false statement, because Treasury is, it's not mandated by Treasury under state law, but it's understood you shouldn't be doing more than 7%. And like I said, MERS is still at 7.35. So that's an issue that came up. There was Harlan Goodrich from Treasury that talked about selling bonds to finance deficits. And I had brought this up before to you guys, mentioned that that was a possibility, but he may mention the fact that you're really taking a risk if you sell bonds, because if you sell them, and you get this pot of money and you stick it all in at once, and then the market goes down, all that money you put in is now worth 60% of what it was worth, and now you've still got to put more money in because it went down, and you've already sold the bonds. So just from listening to him, I don't think it's a very smart idea to sell bonds. I think we need to, we should stay away from that. The next thing is, in the discussion we had with Julie Hamlin up at Foster, Swift, we asked to get, she talked about making sure you know what your administrative costs are, and I, you know, and this goes to the heart of my concerns. Mark sent an email off to MERS, you copied me on it, wanting, "What was their investment rate of return?" He got back a beautiful picture with an arrow going down, and a bunch of other stuff. All they had to do was answer the question, and they didn't. And that's been my problem with them from the get-go. Now, the administrative rate of return is from the arrow and where you try to figure out it ends and you read back and everything, it looks like it's about point, I think it was 0.14 or 0.15%. Now, I contrast that with this, Kevin, my mentally impaired son, works at the hospital. He has a retirement plan. That retirement plan, every quarter sends out a list showing how all the investments did, whether they gained, whether they lost, and then they show it back for a year, they show it back for five years, and so on, okay? Everything's there. They also show that if you invest in this plan, this percentage is being taken out for administrative costs. If you invest in this plan, it's this percentage, and they show it to you. What's so hard about that? These guys should be getting exactly the same thing as should we for MERS. What are the administrative costs? Just answer the question. Don't give me a pretty picture with arrows flying all over the place, okay? Just answer the question.
Did they tell you what the percent was with the graph?
Well, you try to figure it out, if you can figure where the end of the arrow is and read it back and everything, but what's so hard about pointing 0.15? I mean, come on.
They didn't start lowering their administrative costs until they got called out. That's when they started lowering them.
The next question we asked Foster, Swift, "Can we maintain the plan design as it exists right now for these guys?" And the answer was yes, okay? We can, okay? Then we talked to them about the time to get out if we go that route, and they took us through all the steps that are needed to get out, and told us everything, okay? Then we asked, "How many other entities have left MERS?" And they said, "One is booming head of this." They said they had quite a few people who have looked into it, and they've all ended up backing out, okay? And they back out, in my opinion, that 60 cents will get you a cup, two bucks will get you a cup of coffee, okay? They back out because it's a very detailed process, it requires a lot of steps, okay? And the greatest impediment to changing a pension plan is fear. I know what I've got right now, and if it changes, I may not have it, and so I get all worked up about it, and I get that, I get that, and I do not blame anybody for having that outlook, okay? But we've made it as plain as we can, the pension plan's going to be the same, nothing's going to change if we move it, okay? And then we asked them a lot of their costs, so they put that, they gave that $7,600 that we just approved. The third plan that Chris mentioned to me was Green Leaf Trust, Green Leaf Trust. They have offices in Kalamazoo, Detroit, and Traverse City, so they cover the whole state.
That's the private company you're talking about?
That's the third private company.
Norris Purney, William Smith Wealth, and Green Leaf Trust.
MERS also sent to Mark an attachment that said, "We do all these extra things for you." And I sent that attachment along with the stuff that you saw, that I gave you, to all these companies, and I asked them, you know, "Do you do these things?" and so on and so forth. So that part was being put into play as well, and we'll find out what we've got. And I guess that's it for the pension, okay?
So before you continue, I just, I want to add a comment. Until we talked to Foster, Swift, and I've talked to Marty, and I've talked to Foster, Swift, and back and forth, until I had talked to Foster, Swift, and got bits and pieces of the process, only then, only then, did Marty Daggett then share with me the nine-page document of the, you know...
Like a breakdown thing?
Well, it's a nine-page document of the procedural part. It says right here, termination policy and procedure, and it's nine pages. As to Bruce's comment about the other municipalities that Foster, Swift has worked with, his assumption, and I agree with his assumption, that the reason some of them have stayed with MERS is because the bloody policy is nine pages long. It's almost impossible to get out, you know? But Marty wouldn't share that with me until I pressed her and told her we had talked to a legal firm. I mean, so what kind of honesty are we getting? And I'm almost to the point that I'm almost as frustrated as Bruce is, because it's like pulling teeth. You shouldn't have... You shouldn't have to pull teeth to get information, you know? So, that's my two cents. But I'm just, I just want to point out to you, Nimmo, since you were so, you sound so high on MERS, they've not been very forthcoming, you know? Why not share this stuff openly instead of creating hostility? Because they have created hostility, you know, by their inability to be open. So, you know, but anyways, please continue, Bruce.
Well, in that same regard, this is what really set me off. We had them down here probably three years ago. And I was born into them pretty good. And I said, "Why didn't, I said, 'You never told us that we had to put more money into this pension plan.'" And their comment to me was, "Well, you should have put it in yourself." "Well, for heaven's sakes, why didn't we hire them? Why didn't we hire this outfit? They're telling us to put it in, we're putting it in. Previous commissioners put it in. But they didn't tell us right and they knew they weren't because they were using bad assumptions." But to say that back to me that, "Well, it's your responsibility." Well, then what that means is, "We don't even need you. We might as well figure it out for ourselves." We're not the experts. They're supposed to be the experts. They're supposed to tell us what we need to put in to fund these guys' retirement. And they were doing it. So, that, that's what really set me off. Okay, Derek, if you remember, applied for $600,000 for COVID relief. And that particular pot of money has been oversubscribed. I don't know by how much, but I learned on a webinar that it's been oversubscribed and that means we're not going to get the full $600,000. We're going to get a portion of it. What portion, I don't know. We're supposed to know by the 18th of September, the checks will be cut. So, understand that there's not going to be that full amount coming. Next.
Bruce, just a quick question on that. When you applied, when Derek applied for $600,000, is there a deadline for it, number one? There's a deadline and did they at least give a percent of what will come to us?
No.
No percent?
We'll find out September 18th. And there will be no second, that particular program had the potential of a second round of allocations. There'll be no second round of allocations. Okay, Department of Natural Resources. I finally got ahold of whoever, this German gal, whatever she is. But anyway, I got ahold of her and she sent me a copy of Branch County's recreation plan. And she indicated, and I didn't know this, I probably missed it. Can't hear anything anyway. But she sent me a copy of what had been done a year, about a year ago, that she came in and apparently talked to the Parks Board about how to write a recreation plan and what to do and so on and so forth. So, I got all that information. Derek copied it off for me because it was really long and I'll be going to work on that. Now, probably I'm not going to be able to get it done by the end of the year with everything else that's going on. But we're going to move forward with it. I'm going to try to get as much of it done as possible. And that's our five-year plan. If we get that in place, by the first of the year, end of January, something like that, then we can apply for grants through the Natural Resources Trust Fund for the Parks Commission, okay?
Is there something like a grant to start with? This particular, the paperwork that you have, is that an application to start?
No, it's, it's to get the plan drawn up. We can't, we can't apply for anything till we get a recreation plan in place. The board, over in the Board of Health, the Health Department, at our last finance meeting, which was Monday, they're asking for a 15-cent raise in our allocation. We're currently paying $5.02 per person. If you remember, there has been, it got down as low as $4.42 per person. And that, we couldn't go any lower than that because that is the state requirement. It then got raised one, two, three, four times. So, went up 60 cents, so it's at 502. Now, it was at 502 in 19, it was 502 in 20. Made one another 15 cents. I said to them, I said, "I don't think we can do that." I said, "We don't know what next year's going to look like. We don't know what's going to happen up to the legislature with our revenue sharing." And I said, "I can't justify giving you 15 cents more and telling our own people here in Hillsdale County there's not money to do things." So, the whole thing was put off. I'm going to go back to the boards and talk to them. And I guess what I'm asking from you guys is some kind of a sense. For me on the Finance Committee over there, how do you feel about 15 cents, 10 cents, a nickel, nothing? How do you feel?
I feel like, right now, it is not the time to be making raises and changes because we're in flux with this COVID-19 and the financial situation and the budget and everything else. We don't know how things are going to be and it's not the time to be proposing to weaken that.
You say, "Leave it alone."
That's my opinion. What does everybody else think?
What I think is, if we're going to propose a certain cent increase, I would like to see our Sheriff's Department get a raise before we think of giving any other department, you know, a raise. So, if you want to put that on hold because of the situation that we're in and we don't know what our revenue sharing will look like next year, then I would like to say we should put a hold on it, get a ducks in a row before we go with any decision to raise anybody 15 cents or 45 cents.
Okay, so that's two leave it alones.
Leave it alone.
Okay, all right, that's four leave it alones.
So, just so you understand, Commissioner, the 15 cents is on a per capita.
Okay.
And that's the way the three counties are assessed or fund or help fund. And then, of course, the rest of the funding for the Health Department largely comes from grants and other revenue sharing type, you know? But a lot of grants. So, but the counties participate in helping to fund the three counties. And, but it's based on 15 cents or, or as we are currently, $5.02 per capita.
Sure, thanks, Goodison.
The Health Department also got information back from Blue Cross Blue Shield. Their health insurance is going up 6.9% for next year, 6.9%. Okay, then, a little bit of good news. They had their August Revenue Estimating Conference up in Lansing. And the revenue outlook is better than that was estimated in May. Revenue is 2.3 billion higher than the May estimates. Now, this is still, this is where numbers can get you in trouble. This is still 900 million below the forecast in January, 900 million. The School Aid Fund is, is down about 200 million from January. And the General Fund is down 700 million, okay? 700 million. Now, the legislature has some rainy day funds. This was a result of Governor Snyder putting it in place. And there was about 1.2, 1.3 billion in that thing. They took 200 or 300 million out of that for this year to keep things halfway decent. So, there's about 800, 900 million dollars left in that thing. So, the legislature could, if they wanted to, take that whole thing and serve it in the School Aid Fund and the General Fund and there would be no changes, no cuts. Probably they won't do that. It'll probably be a mix, okay? Now, I talked to somebody up in Lansing that half, half the time knows what they're talking about. And they indicated a 30% cut in revenue sharing. If we get that, that'll be about $300,000 that we'll lose. Now, this pot that I just talked about earlier, the 600,000, which is not going to be six anymore, it's going to be something else. Let's say it's 500,000. That money under the rules can be used to substitute for General Fund money that we're paying wages in April and May. That 500,000 would then be available to go forward. But if we lose our revenue sharing of 300,000, now there's only 200,000 of that left. This, we got other pots of COVID money that we're supposedly, supposedly we're going to get and we're going to pay for them. But you can't count on it till you got it. So, we got to be careful. Like I said, this year we're going to be okay. Next year is going to be the bugger that's going to bite us if we're going to get in trouble. So, as we put our budget together this fall, we've got to be really careful about what we budget and how much we put in because we may simply not have it. The other thing I want to point out to you is Hillsdale County has one of the lowest fund balances of any county in the state of Michigan. The average county fund balance is 31%. We're going to be now, I think, around 10 or 11%, okay? After this year's audit. We're very low. If that fund balance, if we can build that up, then when things like this happen with the COVID and everything else, if you've got enough money to draw on, then we can cushion the impact. We don't have that. So, that's why it's going to be really tight and we've got to be really careful because there's not a lot to draw on. So, just, just general information. All right, with that, I run my mouth enough, Mr. Chairman, I'll shut up.
Six more minutes and you'll be in an hour.
I set a new world record?
Do I dare ask, are there any questions for Bruce? Okay, thank you. All right, Ruth.
Why don't you skip me and go on to, you've got lead.
I'm going to let you go, then I'm going to go, and then I'm going.
I was going to say, why don't you go first because my...
You've got a few things to say.
Yeah, go ahead, you go ahead.
Julie will get to take over as soon as I get done with my report so I can go up to Lifeways and get my four hours of indoctrination.
Is it orientation today? Okay, good luck.
Yeah. Yeah, they want everything but a blood sample, I think. Let's see, well, let's take up that...
They're getting ready to do those up there too.
Let's take up the action item first because I do also need to drop that off at the Sheriff's Department for their signature. It is 20-077. "We recommend approval of the attached agreement between the County of Hillsdale, Hillsdale County Sheriff, the Police Officers Labor Union or Council, and West Ludiker Employee." And the agreement is attached to that in your packet. And basically, I will, well, I move for support. Do I have a second? So, now that I have a support, in general, the agreement, in general, says because of COVID and everything, we've extended the coverage for Wes as far as the rehab and doctor's appointments, workman's comp, et cetera. And that's pretty much in general, is what it says. I mean, I'm paraphrasing immensely. Is there any questions or comments?
This, this doesn't commit us to anything, or future commissions, anything down the road. This is just a one-time deal.
Well, the exception to that would be, Bruce, if we have to draw up another agreement, if there's a spike in COVID and everything comes to a crash and halt this fall like they've talked about and Wes is not done with his therapy and once again his therapy's canceled because of COVID, then we would have to, you know, revisit it. But that would be the only exception. I mean, this should, and I, knock on wood, this should take care of it. But, you know, we've got to be cognizant of what the experts have said. There's supposed to be a false spike, you know? Is there or won't there, we don't know. But, but this should take care of it, so. Okay, any further comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 5 to 0.
I just, I just want to say real, real quick that I'm very glad to see Wes here today. And I'm very glad to see that you're alive and you're healthy. We were all really scared for you and prayed for you and your family. And I, I can't begin to relate to the journey that you've been on all these months with your therapy and all the problems, you know, medical that you've had and everything else. But I just, I'm really, really glad to see you here today. And I praise God that you're alive and that you're with us. Thank you very much.
You're tough enough, Wes.
Yeah, thank you.
Wes, I got to add this comment because Bruce view of them, you know? And I just got to tell her that it's because of Spartan Will.
Whatever worked for you, then, that's good.
I appreciate all the support, thank you very much.
All right, and I'll drop this at the Sheriff's Department. They can sign it. And then, Wes, there's a spot for you to sign it as well as the union. So, I can grab your signature on the way out the door if you'd like.
That sounds great, thank you.
I will have to say, Mark, you look so much better in blue than you do in green. He hardly ever wears blue, hardly ever. He always wears green. But you look a lot better in blue.
See what I have to put up there, Wes? Okay, I better keep moving or she'll...
Or I'm going to keep going.
You're just going to kick me out of here, how's that?
All right. I'm just going to need you to stop by and slide back a silent minutes at some point.
Okay, I'll try and do that four weeks down. All right, thank you all for that. I had kidded with somebody that I was, I'd be very upset if I had any, no votes on that. Okay, Board of Health update, I sent it out to everyone but for the rest of you present today, we currently, as of yesterday's report, we've had five new cases of COVID in the last three days in Hillsdale County. That brings the current case numbers. Branch County, 369. Hillsdale County, 271. And St. Joe County is still the winner at 581. Now, I don't know if that's winner or not, but they're leading the pack. So, we've been lagging behind. I don't know that that means we're doing a better job. We may know more after that testing on Thursday, but...
No new deaths at all, right?
No, we have had no new deaths. Branch County had one new death, I believe it was last week. And I believe in the last week or so, St. Joe has had two new deaths. But Hillsdale has been steady at the 25. So, so that's, that's good there. As I indicated to Mr. Thomas earlier, we're looking at negotiations either on 9/14 or 9/15 to start. And hopefully, we're able to put something together and get that wrapped up before the end of the year, is my intention. Medical care meeting. The, the facility's running behind now on their Medicaid days largely due to their lower population. They're hovering right at 130 and their normal is up around 165 to 170. Their full occupancy is 170. So, it looks like they're not going to make their Medicaid days. With that said, Terry indicated to us that the state is looking at basically, basically a mulligan for this year or a do-over. And they're going to use last year, which would be just perfect because then we'd still get our Medicaid reimbursement, you know, additional reimbursement. So, so we'll see and I'll keep you, I'll keep you updated on that. And the other item that was listed on your agenda. Marnie has asked me to read to you basically a prepared statement. "The commissioners have no role in the recount." Well, let me stress that. However, "To keep you informed and the public informed." She has asked me to read that the recount will not be held until the county gets clearance from the Bureau of Elections. "I am estimating the first part of September for the recount to take place, which will be held in this conference room," or she puts Board of Commissioners room. "The Board of Canvassers will oversee the process along with myself and Judy Levy. Due to the high volume of ballots in Jefferson Township, there will be three sets of teams comprised of two election inspectors, Democrat and Republican. One will count, the other will tally. There will also be two subs present, each a Democrat and Republican. Each will be paid a per diem of $40 up to three hours along with their round-trip mileage. I will keep the board informed as to the date and, or the date of the recount and the details of the cost." Sincerely, Marnie Cass. And it is only, I didn't copy off his filing, but his filing is strictly for Jefferson Township. So, I don't know if you want that application. But in any event, she wanted me to put that on record just to keep you informed of where that process is at. So, and that's all I have wrote down. Is there anything, any other questions of me at this time? With that, I will depart for Lifeways, and Julie, you have the wheel.
All righty. Good luck with your training. Safe travels.
All the best.
Thank you.
So we'll pick up where we left off then with Ruth and Human Services.
Coming up is going to be a, a national suicide hotline, and it's gonna be 988. It's not happening until 2022, so it's two years from now, but it's in the works for a 988 national suicide hotline. Right now, the national suicide hotline is a long number that hardly anybody can remember. So by making it 988, it'll be a quick number like 911 is, everybody knows is an emergency number. Suicides in Michigan have increased 35% in the last 10 years, and they're up in Hillsdale County. They're increasing in Hillsdale County, especially in youth. 56% spike in youth suicides. I notice in Hillsdale County, a lot of senior citizen suicides, like people that are in their 70s, people that are in their 50s. That, that's what I notice. The other thing that I want to talk about is that I'm, I'm doing the MAT Conference, and I know Namo was doing it, Nuo and I were on it together a couple different times, and I think Mark is doing it. You're not doing it, are you, Julie? And I don't think Bruce is either, so I will talk a lot about it. But it, I think it's very good. It's, I think it's very worth it for $50. I think it's very, very worth it. I, I went on with Tom Izzo. Were you on with Tom Izzo?
Yeah, I was, yeah. Very encouraging.
I thought Tom, Tom Izzo gave an hour talk in the MAT Conference on the computer. He was excellent.
He was super good.
He was excellent. He had a bunch of notes on it.
I've heard him pretty easily.
Yeah, I've heard him before, too. But, I mean, for him to sit there for a whole hour, he didn't even have to do that. It was really, really good. I mean, I, I think that this virtual conference is, is saving a lot of money from one, I mean, it's nice to have the regular conferences, but, but this is saving a lot of money, and I think it's, it's very effective. Because we were even able to ask questions also. So anyways, there was a Human Services Network meeting this month that I went to or was on the virtual. At Michigan Works in Hillsdale on Care Drive, Janet Myers retired. She was the manager. And Sandy Balance has taken over as the manager of Michigan Works in Hillsdale on Care Drive. Sandy has worked at Michigan Works for a long time. She's not new. And, and she's the one that has, has done a lot of work with businesses in Hillsdale and knows, knows a lot about hiring and what's going on in that. So she's the new manager on Care Drive. Legal Services in Jackson is looking for a new attorney to assist for eviction and housing cases, and it's Hillsdale and Jackson County. It's Mike Derby at Legal Services. Other than that, there's masks at Community Action Agency. Community Action Agency got 1,000 masks for low income that are available. There's also cloth masks at DHHS that are available. And then the other thing was, we already talked about the drive-through COVID testing. Families looking for childcare. www.greepstarttoquality is the website to assist families looking for childcare. And that is my report, unless there's any questions.
Speaking of conferences, are you going to attend any part of the Michigan Works Conference?
I didn't know.
It's virtual also.
I didn't know there was a Michigan Works Conference. I didn't get anything on it.
Okay. I'll get it. I'll get it.
Okay, okay.
It's in a few weeks.
Okay, okay.
And it's virtual. Okay. I just wondered.
Yeah, good. Yeah, thanks, because I didn't, I don't think I got anything. Okay, unless there's any questions, that's my report.
Any questions for Bruce? Okay, moving on, Namorata.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, for this opportunity. So I just want to start with, I do have a discussion. I don't want to go at length on it, but I sent it prior to the meeting today on the MSU Extension Services and assisting with updating the master plan and under Correspondence Number Two, if you will. And so have a look at that, if you will. And so what it is, is if you have a copy there, this was sent to me just a couple of days back, and we were approved by MSU Extension for assistance, you know, for the upcoming county master plan process, if you will. And so what it is, is they just sent a little bit of a breakdown, and they offered a little range of three services, if you look at it, depending on the level of need. So the following chart, if you would look, it's a one-page, and it includes a ballpark, you know, guesstimate, if I may, on the cost, and if you decide to see one or more services, they're very happy to talk to us in detail about the schedules and the final cost ultimately, ending with some kind of service agreement, all right, for the county and MSU Extension. So, and if you know, right now, they're all operating remotely for the 2020 through early 2021. That's what we've gotten to know. So they've provided this through the online workshops and meetings. So if you look, it talks about one, two and a half hour interactive online training, which with the complete master planning process and best practices, that's the little pricing there, $333 plus indirect. And below that is approximately 12 hours of service. If they would provide, serve on a monthly steering committee for one year, and so they would provide feedback and whatever ideas, some more updates and stuff with the master plan chapter, that go chapter by chapter in any engagement activities, and that's $800 plus indirect. And if you go further down, they talk a little bit about the co-facilitate partner with planning consultant or staff and monthly steering committee meetings and public engagements. That's just roughly for 20 to 40 hours and for one year. That's the package they've given, $600 to roughly 2,700 plus indirect. And the last one is provide written or verbal feedback on early draft. So that means whatever we have right now, the draft, the master plan, which we're in process going, reviewing each chapter by chapter, that's just complimentary. So this is all provided by the MSU, and I know that this board realizes that we did bring in a little conversation with Mr. Steve Duke, if you recall, and Julie, you were kind enough to invite him here. He talked about Region Two. So in comparison to that, look at what we have right now here. This is just in discussion today. We'd like to see where we can, where we can move forward with the county master plan, and, and I don't know if you have any questions in regards with it, just provided something for you to have a look. Yes, Bruce?
What's indirect?
I think, I'm thinking something to do with the meeting for, to understand, I think, because they're operating remotely, so it would be like Zoom or something like that. Pardon me?
Can you find out what indirect means and what it costs?
I, I can, I can definitely do that. But right now, like I said earlier, they're doing remotely everything all this year, and they're going to do it for earlier 2021. They've already given us their schedules.
What's the difference between two and three?
The only, two and three is they'll kind of give you some service in regards with, you know, I think the first one is the whole package, if I'm not mistaken, and not the whole process, just online training of what to do, and it's only two and a half hours. And the other one, I think, is more than, that's 12-hour service.
Two, two and three, the second box and third box. The second box will serve on a monthly steering committee for one year. The third box says, co-facilitate partner with planning consul or staff at monthly steering committee meetings.
Right.
It looks to me like it's the same thing.
It is the same thing, and what I'm understanding, what I'm looking at it is, looks like they're going to kind of, on a monthly basis, they're going to give us whatever, you know, consultancy and, you know, public engagement events, which I don't see how much we would have as part of, in regards with, you know, the county planning commission. So that is just something that just thrown it in there, but in my understanding, as what I got it from MSU was, that we don't do any monthly events because our townships, they, they already adopt their plans, and whatever they need to, they send it to us if they have anything, updates and zoning ordinance or, you know, and that. So it's just something to look at, where we want to do, if we want to go this direction. This is just today's discussion, just bringing it to you, just showing you, because like last time, we had the Region Two come in, and they gave their presentation. So this is just something the MSU can provide. We don't have to go with two or three, or, you know, we can just discuss right now and see how you feel, because obviously, we're tight on the budget, but see how you feel for next year and how we move forward.
I have a question, and I think this would be a good question for Brad. I was on the county planning commission the last time we did the master plan, when we updated the master plan, and I think you were on it, too. We didn't, we didn't pay, we didn't pay for all this. Michigan State Extension, it was the girl that, she doesn't work there anymore.
Part of the memorandum of understanding, and I actually had some notes to address on that, Commissioner. And if it's Commissioner, I was going to direct my public comment, but since you asked, it was actually my suggestion explaining a commission chair, that we inquire of MSU what services might be available to the county under our current memorandum of understanding. Historically, looking back, I, I did serve along with Commissioner Brown when we did our last master plan. And that was actually Jenny Shara, who was on the MSU at that point, she provided those services for us when we wrote our current master plan. What I would like to say, in looking at that in today's packet, I really don't think that we need to expend any county dollars. If we're not going to get those services as part of, and that's really what I was, was asking Kim to approach MSU, if we could avail upon MSU, if they would be available under the dollars that we're already paying under our memorandum of understanding. I don't feel that it is necessary that we expend any additional dollars. We already have a really good template, and we have a really good core of people, and what we are doing, just to update you on the process with that, we, we are basically going through that document that we have, that is, that is really well-written with the assistance of MSUE previously. And we are simply trying to align it with what the landscape is currently in Hillsdale County. So we, we've actually, we've approached the Historical Society. They have updated for us what the historical perspective of the county is. We're approaching the schools. We have a school representative to get updates on that. We are, and Commissioner Caswell spoke today about recreational plan. The city of Hillsdale, there's the, there's a four-unit Hillsdale Township, Hillsdale City, Fayette Township, Jonesville City, they have a headwaters recreational, so we're going to ask for a copy to incorporate those things into that master plan. But I really, getting back, I really don't think that it's necessary for us to spend any additional dollars or get the assistance, because very honestly, in Hillsdale County, our planning commission is really biased. We don't need monthly. We, we don't really have county zoning. We really don't have, other than this master plan, and the oversight of looking when local units have things that they change, they do zoning to make sure that it complies with that master plan. That's really the only function that we have, and I think paying for any additional services is really unnecessary in terms of public dollars.
That's what, I remember that's what we did the last time, was we broke it up by section, and it's the same thing.
Right, and if you see, this is just like a little layout here. We don't have to go with any tax dollars right now in order to have anything, you know, added, or like I said, as a county, we don't adopt, per se, certain ordinances, but what we do is we encourage our townships to do that. And so if you look at the last aligned item, which is on this particular sheet, it says, provide written or verbal feedback on early draft, master plan chapter. So right now, we're dealing with what we have, a draft, and that's complimentary from MSU. So if that's the direction you want to go, but the whole ideology was to present it to the board and see what direction that this board would like to see us go. And I really thank Chair Brad Vincent coming here and giving that input. So this is just, again, just a discussion, and so we don't have to make anything concrete in regards with, if you want services, other than just the feedback on what we have right now as a draft.
I think if you would find anything necessary, that there was a small amount of money in the planning commission budget this year for this exact thing, if you need it. But if you don't, you don't.
That's right, yeah.
I just want to add that.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. It's always good to know. So that's what it is. And this is, no question on that, and I can move forward. Madam Chair? Okay, so moving forward, moving forward, if you see on your report, there is the medical examiner report there, the invoice, and a couple of things that Commissioner Brown was kind enough to reflect on, the ways that we do have an uptick on suicide cases, and the percent was given about 35%. So yes, we are dealing with that, so I'm gonna just leave it to that on the MEI report. And the other report is the activity report for the Sheriff's Department. I always like to put it there, just to give you an idea as to what we're dealing with in regards with how many emergency calls, non-emergency, and how many immediate meals we'll provide, and so on and forth. So that activity report is there. Moving forward, I just wanted to reflect the fact that we did not have a 911 Central Dispatch Board meeting, if you will, because we didn't have any calling business that we had to address, but we, we did have, we did have a couple of items just to share with you, and I always like to bring back to the Board of Commissioners that, to what we're doing with the ETSB Board, and a couple of provisional offers of employment they were passed. For example, from the personnel point of view, got information from the 911 Central Dispatch that they had been doing some recruiting, so in regards with covering up some of the dispatch positions that they've been looking for, and they have some, a couple of applicants that are in queue, and they will be soon looked at. So they're in the process of recruiting as well. If you ever go take a ride there, that 911 Central Dispatch, the property parking lot was recently sealed, so it's looking nice and repainted, the dumpster fence, just FYI, letting you guys know, staying by the county facilities of the department. County Facility Department did that, so I want to thank them for that. A couple of other things, just a few weeks back, we had an issue with the generators, so the power went out at the Ossio Tower, if you may, and due to the vines and climbing the pole and shorting out the fuse to the transformer, so we had that issue. And so the generator ran for several days until it shut down due to low oil alarm. And so Tracy, Tracy Peter added oil and was able to restart the generator, so we got that taken care of, so we didn't have to pay an outside entity to come look at. Any which ways, so when the generators were installed, they inquired about monitoring alarms and all of that, so that's in place. And moving forward, they're having remote monitoring equipment installed at the two sites mentioned, and one is at the Litchfield site, just information here for total time cost of $750 and an annual cost of $210. And the generators at the Bundy Hill and Woodbridge are old enough, and that monitoring's not an option. So just a little information from that standpoint for you guys. Just quickly, running back to the MEI, I thought I'll introduce it right within the 911 Central Dispatch. So the number's year-to-date is 89, and so kind of, just wanted to give you that idea there. Finances, a couple of that were talked about, and I think the last meeting that we had, we didn't have a meeting, but I did send, send you some of the reports on the finances, if you will, and those were the non-personnel expense summary, if you had any questions, so just kind of giving you a little update about that. So that was, if you recall the reports, they were the year-to-date budget versus actual, and the last year income and expense comparison report. So those were the reports that were sent to you, Commissioners, if you will, in the report, although we didn't have a meeting, but I just thought I'll send you those reports that I had received from the ETSB. Radio consults, kind of just bringing a little report about that. So there were some conversations in regards with vendors, last meeting, the meeting before that I attended, and so they did receive some quotes, and so they're working on it, and, and so they're just kind of letting you know about that. And COVID definitely has slowed a lot of things down, and obviously, processed down a lot of term... definitely has slowed a lot of things down, and obviously processed down a lot dramatically, but they're hoping to kind of be ready to make some kind of recommendation to the board there, and when that will come, which is September 16, sorry, I'll kind of keep you posted after that. And new 800 MHZ radios, they'll be necessary for either of the solutions, so just kind of bringing that to you. And so that really concludes. One last thing I wanted to point out is about the US flag, and if you recall, they subscribed the Hillsdale Kiwanis Club, by the way, program, so they can probably fly the flag on specified holidays through the year, so the hem on ours was coming apart, and so that's why Pat Knight brought us a new one. And so I want to thank Pat publicly for that. I really like to do that because the fact is that we did try to not flag, and there was some hemming needed, and that was taken care of, so I really thank Pat for that. And moving forward with that, I have been attending the MAP conferences, it's been very educating, and once in a while I've bumped into Ruth also online, virtually. So the meeting began on Tuesday, that would have been August 18. August 18, 19, and 20th, the three meetings happened, we didn't have any meeting on Friday, Saturday, no meeting. They'll be meeting today and tomorrow, so these are the last two, so till the 27th. And so I just kind of thought I'll share a little bit what's going on and what I mean by education. So August 18, we had the conference that began, began at 10:00 AM, and so a couple of things that they shared was COVID-19, big topic of concern, right? So the conference talked a little bit about developing a long-term strategy for our county facilities. So just a long story short, what I talked about, the workshop that I attended on 18, that focused on some best practices, you know, we've lived and learned, and innovative techniques, new equipment, and so MAC, who we really get a lot of information from, they wanted to share some information about their long-term plans with all the facilities. And so that was really interesting, and so that was really another point where we learned quite a bit. And so next day, we had the meeting again, and the next day was 11:00 AM, and so the virtual meeting for 19th was, that I participated was about legal loopholes, and it talks about Michigan tax law. And that particular workshop that I attended, it talked about, focused on the last few decades in Michigan, about the local governments have seen, you know, revenue and decline, and you've heard it from Commissioner Caswell all the time, so that was reflected. And so talked about some revenue decline due to increase in charitable tax exemptions, and a couple of other things were talked about was, private companies with the help of state government and Michigan Supreme Court have utilized legal loopholes to classify for-profit businesses as charitable institutions. So, and it talked a little bit, that whole conference, based on that topic, talked a little bit about how this has negatively affected local governments, and how these loopholes are exploited, this boycott. So that was talked a little bit about. And on the 20th, my favorite topic was talked about, started at 10:00 AM, and this was talked a little bit about the transportation funding. It might be of interest to you, Julie, because it's always a concern in our county. And it talked a little bit about the state of Michigan has an expansive and diverse network of transportation. It talked about automobiles, aviation rail, Viking boat, what else, public transportation, and on and on. And talked a little bit about the state trunk lines, county roads, city roads, gas taxes, registration taxes, talked all about that, a lot of confusing stuff, but it talked about that too. And that workshop basically gave a little refresher on the basic flow of tax dollars towards infrastructure, where counties, you know, they fit into the state structure. So that was talked about. So that, those were the last three meetings that I attended. Like I said, there weren't any meetings Friday, Saturday, they'll resume today and tomorrow.
That transportation funding one was a really good one.
Correct.
It was a man that, William Hamilton, who worked in the House Fiscal Agency, he was very knowledgeable, and he was very, he gave a very good presentation. And then they asked questions at the end, that one was really worth it. He thinks that we need to have tolls in Michigan, we need to put in toll roads.
Like Chicago, yeah, exactly. So those are fantastic covering, thanks Commissioner Brown for putting that to. And then of course, Tom Easol did the very casual, like appearance, and of course, talked variously about how we can be more positive as our local officials. So that was really encouraging, I got a lot out of that. And today's lineup that I will be attending, or hoping I can attend after we're done with it, will be talking about cybersecurity threats and prevention, and how as county officials we can prepare. And basically, you know, it grows every year, it talks about individuals, units of government, we face it all the time, and you probably learned that from David, our ID Director, talking about it at length. And for example, companies like Fortune 500 companies, they're subject to hackers too, attempting every day. So the target of that is pretty, you know, malicious intent. So those things will be covering, they will be covering, and I'm hoping to attend in a later timeframe today, and it will end tomorrow. So those were the couple of things I wanted to highlight about, and I think I went a really great length about it. I just wanted to add really quickly, last but not the least, it's just something that I want to share, that as we're dealing with all of this, you know, new conversations in regards with MERS and pension plan and all of that, and I think, you know, let's take into consideration, for me from the perspective of, and I wish Mark was here, but as a Public Safety Committee Chair, I feel there's a lot that we need to understand. It's not about that not all the information is in front of us in regard to the pension plan. Look at it this way, we're dealing with law enforcement, there's one batch of folks who are wanting to completely defund the law enforcement, and achieve and try their best. And then we have here a county who has to act responsibly in regards with how we care for our law enforcement. Well, this is Sheriff's Department, Sheriff's Office, I like to call it, and the team, the law enforcement place, and these are the critical roles they play. So when we take out something, or we have a proposal, no matter what, I think it's important that we place proper options in front of them, and if they have union representation, I think it's just important to put it out there, to have that conversation with the union reps, to have that bond created, rather than live in misunderstanding, and break this bond that we have with our current officials, you know. So that's just a little bit, I think we're doing our best, and the main thing is, I want also this county to understand that the role these law enforcement put up with every single day. You and I were here covered with masks and everything, and they're every day, 24 by 7 operation, they're facing COVID-19, chasing, dealing with issues, dealing with criticalities, with threats every single day in the law enforcement environment. And not once we think. Now we have today here, David Luvestre, it gets me very emotional to think that this man, because I personally went to see him along with my husband, I feel so proud that he took that attempt to come, give us his presence today. I just really appreciate what they do, and somebody missing an accident at a line of duty, it is our responsibility as a community, as a county, how we approach, you know, these critical issues, whether it's pension plan, it's a work month, COM, whatever, these are sensitive issues. And that's why there's a union in place. I think we need to create that bond to have that proper conversation so that we can relay our information more responsibly. That's just a little nutshell I want to say. With that, I can, I'd be happy to take any questions if you have, Madam Chair or the Board, I'd like to answer.
Any other questions for Commissioner Carolyn?
No, but I think you did a great, you're doing a good job.
Yes.
Good job, very thorough, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, God bless you.
Going on with my report, I just wanted to talk about the better part of two full days, last two weeks, I sat with the, as part of the EDP Board, to go over the Michigan Strategic Fund Grant applications that we had in the county. The MEDC received CARES Act funding and earmarked grants for small businesses and nonprofits who were negatively affected by the COVID impact. Each county in the state, including Region 9, which is Hillsdale, Jackson, Lenway, Livingston, Monroe, and Washtenaw, received funding based on their population. Because of our low population, we only qualified for 4.55% of the money, which was a little over $369,000. By legislation, 30% of the funding was to be provided to minorities, women-owned and veteran-owned businesses. So those were our qualifications for this money. We had over $1.5 million in requests for funding, for help, and about 80 different businesses applied for this funding. Unfortunately, we were not able, you know, to help everyone. Just the women-owned businesses, along with veterans and minorities, requests amounted to $444,000 plus dollars. We ended up with the committee of, who are all Board members at the EDP, along with the EDP Board Director, excuse me, Dave Mackey, Jeff Gray, Kim Blythe, Don Germain, and myself, we're basically the committee, along with the EDP Director, and we came up with the funding amounts. It was very difficult, and it took hours of time. But anyways, I do have a spreadsheet of how all the funding was disseminated, and the businesses that will receive funding, we were able to help 30 to 40 businesses out of almost 80 that applied, and they will receive a letter in the next 10 days, everybody telling you whether you did or didn't receive funding, and then people will receive their funding September 30th, next one. So that'll go out to everybody. But we try to, you know, work through it, it's not easy when you have to pick winners and losers, you know, that's just, but I'll forward this to everybody, just so this email, so that you guys can see, see the results of what we did. The other, I attended the road meeting, and things are progressing on that, the Michigan transportation ones, you know, have been much lower than last year, but surprisingly, the one for last one, which is really like two months behind, is, wasn't quite as bad as they suspected, although it was definitely still lower. So that, but that was a little bit of nice relief, that it wasn't as drastically lower as the previous month. So that's come back a little bit. And the perks, the monies that we approved to replace the stove and fix the bathroom at the house, that stuff has been done, completed, which is great. However, the perks budget, you know, continues to suffer because of not being able to really rent out the community center, so, due to the COVID restrictions. So they haven't been able to really rent that out. But other than that, unless anybody has questions for me, that will conclude my report. Questions?
Madam Chair, just one thing was, in regards to the, I know the flooring had to be replaced as well at the house, what about the stove, was that already purchased, or we still waiting for it?
No, no, the stove was already there, I understand you.
That's great, that's great.
So then I will do a call-out to the public, does anybody else have a public comment that they'd like to come forward?
Hi, Lieutenant Dyson from the Sheriff's Department, I know most of you. I'm the Chief Unit Steward for the Supervisors Union. I just feel like there's been some miscommunication on some topics regarding MERS. Not to go into history, but the MERS plan was set up years ago, was not set up conducive to funding, it actually started as 0% funding. So to make claims that the mess we're in today is based on a rate of return assumption, I don't think that's a true statement, I think it's misleading. The fact that within 20 years, we went from a 0% balance to 62%, I think actually has done quite well. I've sat through several of these meetings and have listened to several of the statements on MERS. You know, there's been talk about the administration fees for MERS, and how it's astronomical, and all these other statements. I got the same slide that Mark got that shows MERS fees, the graph was actually quite easy to read, it showed the last five years, and it showed those fees have went down the last five years. It shows the investment fees at .14%, it shows administration fees at .20% for a total of .34% in fees that MERS is charging. In contrast to that, I called ICMA yesterday and talked to our representative role. ICMA is on average charging .6% in fees, almost double MERS. But yet, meeting after meeting, we hear about MERS's fees, and no one has ever brought up any other company's fees. I think that's misleading. This Foster Swift has provided you with a list of entities that they say will handle the MERS plan. That is not true. They may handle the money, but no other entity can take the defined benefit plan we have today and administer that plan. We've had people that have come to our agencies from other MERS entities, we've had officers that have left our agency and went to other entities that have MERS. I've worked for the county for 20 years, I have 20 years of MERS service credit. If I leave here and go to Marshall, that 20 years goes with me. If we switch to another plan, the only thing that plan's going to give you is money. So for Foster Swift to tell you that another company can administer the same exact plan is misleading, if not factually inaccurate. So I welcome the discussions we're going to have upcoming with MERS. I hope the Board can look at these things and make a decision with the union and with MERS, and whatever way we decide to go. But lately, it seems like a lot of these discussions have been made on emotion and not the facts. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm maintaining my six feet here, so mask-free. First of all, Commissioners, I'd just like to take a moment to say thank you to these guys here around the back. Putting on my fire and EMS hat, I interact with these gentlemen on a regular basis, and the level of professionalism and the help that they provide for the rest of us in public safety is just outstanding. So they are to be complimented, and you should be very, very proud of your law enforcement here in Hillsdale County. A couple of other things that I had for you, one was in regard to this designated assessor that you're talking about. Now, as a township supervisor, that's something that can directly affect our unit, depending on the person that we hire to be our assessor. I do think that it's a really good idea that you consider paying a retainer for that. Basically, you're asking somebody to be available, and so consequently, I think that it's the policy that you have an agreement, you pay them somebody to do that. What would discourage, I was a little disconcerted with, is hearing Commissioner Caswell say, well, the townships or the other units should pay for that. Well, equalization is a service that you provide, and unfortunately, we have these things that come down from the state called unfunded mandates, and we got about $20 billion of them, that we really can't do anything about because they're all pre-heavily. So, and this is kind of a problematic rule, it's really not something the legislature did, and that's what heavily addresses, is this something, this is something the state tax emission and Department of Treasury did. But I would encourage you to consider as part of this process to look at paying a retainer, but I would also discourage you at the same time from trying to pass that cost on off to the townships. If we need it, we're going to pay for it, we're going to burn it, and it's not going to be inexpensive at all for us. But I do think that that is something that you should provide through equalization. The other thing on the agenda today was when talking about the per capita cost of the Health Department, I did sit on that Health Department Board for six years, just a little historical perspective. There's an interesting thing with Branch County, that number that you pay on is based on the census, and guess what we're doing right now, we're doing census. The rest of that story though is, is when they do the census, they include the prison population in Branch County, but as part of that agreement that we have with the three counties, whatever that number is, on January 1, for the prison census, they exclude that from the number that Branch County pays. So all I would give you that piece of information, and since we are doing census, I would really be hesitant to name a number, whatever that might be, until after you get those census figures for the 2020 census. Thank you very much.
Would anybody else like to make public comment today?
I would. Quick comment, a request, a big House Committee, Police Officers Labor Council, but basically... But basically, you know, there's going to be a lot of meetings, a lot of discussions taking place in the future. We're glad to participate and want to have a productive outcome. But one of the things that I hope the board does consider, I mean, I'm not here to sell MERS or anything else, but MERS exists in a lot of governmental entities. Yeah. The nice thing with MERS is, you know, they have all the different programs and plans. They take care of everything internally. And you ask for a report, they give it back to you. Maybe you're not getting the report back in the fashion you want. I'm sure you can contact them and get that. One of the things that was mentioned earlier is you had asked for this nine-page document, this how to withdraw from the, the MERS website. If you get on the MERS website and then the bar, you know, and the ad, you know, query how to withdraw from MERS, I think it's pretty transparent. It pops everything out. There's, there's one thing I've experienced through all my years as a member of MERS. Get anything I want off a website, and if I can't get it there, I make a quick phone call and get it. So enough about that. But one of the, the other thing that I noted in an effort for trying to move things along, Mr. Caswell passed out a couple of documents here to the, to the, to the board. Can I get a copy of those?
Sure, there's a copy right there of one thing. Now move that.
That's the other one.
Yeah, right here.
Okay. All right. I thank you for your time. We'll talk to you soon.
Thank you.
Last call. Anyone else call the public? Okay, we'll conclude public comment then. Additional business, Ruth?
I just want to say, as far, as far as without due respect to what Dave was saying, he says it's on the MERS website. I feel like MERS has breached our trust. And I don't trust them anymore. After all that's happened and they give us false figures, this is, this is a statewide issue that's happening in municipalities all over the whole state. And I don't trust their website. I don't trust any information that they're giving us. I, I don't think they're honest. I think that they, they haven't been forthwith. They're not forthwith until they're called out. And I just, I don't trust them. That's the way I feel. I feel like they've breached our trust.
And I appreciate your comments and your feelings. And I'm the polar opposite. Anytime as an officer that I was working through the years, I had questions, either the website or the contact person, gave me exactly everything. I could check it, it was always accurate. And even in this, doing what I'm doing today, I find that they're running out of money. So I just want to agree to disagree on your side out there.
Okay. And the other thing I wanted to say is that I feel like, I feel like what our commissioners are trying to do is, is protect our police pensions. Because I feel like we're on this train that if we don't, you know, if we don't fund these underfunded pensions, it's going to come a day when, when, when there's not going to be the money for those pensions. And so I feel like what we're trying to do is, is be proactive and get caught up. And it's, that's what, that's what all municipalities in Michigan are trying to do. And it's just, I feel like we're trying to protect. We're not trying to take away. We're not trying to do anything against you guys. We're trying to protect what we've promised to you guys. That's how I feel. You can, go ahead, go ahead, Jason. Sure, that's fine.
I appreciate how you feel, Ms. Brown, that's for sure. And I understand these discussions have been ongoing. But that being said, will we have an active stake in what occurs? And at this point, we feel like we've been left out of these discussions. All these meetings that we've seen, that the county officials have held, all these comments have been made by, by the people involved, but the participants here have been left out of those conversations. So from our standpoint, it feels like the board is making a unilateral move to pull out of MERS during the course of our current and active labor contract. So there's a process for all these things to be addressed. And we feel like the board is already taking steps to undermine that process, is how we feel. We're hoping that's not the case. We're hoping there's a miscommunication there. We're hoping that we can put the brakes on this train before it, like she said, runs down the track. And we can get together collectively, discuss this issue and find a collective way forward.
Okay, good. That's good. I feel, I feel sorry that you feel like that we're trying to undermine you. Because I'm not going to speak for this board. I don't speak for any other commissioner. I speak for Commissioner Brown. So I'm not going to speak for anybody else. But I would, I would personally never do anything to undermine you guys. That's, that's nowhere where I'm ever coming from. I would, I would speak up and I would fight back against that. That's, to me, that's, I'm sorry that you guys feel that way. And I hope that going forward, we can come together and get on the same page. Because I think what I understand and what I believe is that we're just trying to make sure that we, we get you guys what, what you guys have worked hard for. Pensions is a big deal. You guys have worked hard all these years and you should get exactly what you have coming to you. And, and that's all I have to say. I appreciate Jason.
Part of that, if I could add, since I took over the union back when Linda Loomis was here for the treasurer's office, she handled the MERS account. I got signed up with MERS and I'm on the account as administrator. So every year I get the actuary bill. So MERS has always told the county the minimum amount they needed to pay to keep active with the fund. But they've also recommended the county pay more because the county has chosen not to do that. I mean, now we're saying that we're trying to catch up and we're trying to fix this. They've meant those recommendations for several years. And nothing was done at the time. So again, to say that they're misleading and they're not trustful and they're not giving us information, they were giving us information. We just chose not to listen to it and not to do anything with it.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Okay. I respect your opinion.
With that, they also do quarterly statements, MERS does.
Okay.
So that helps everybody.
I respect your opinion and I'm glad to hear it. I'm glad you guys are here and that's what we're here.
And hospitals are being shared with everyone.
Okay.
I mean, I actually had to get the county's approval to get on the account. That's the only way I started to see them.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all my comments. Thank you.
Bruce, do you have any additional business?
No.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, me neither. So probably major.
If I may, I just want to follow guys to the road here. I have this, we have a circuit over at jury trials, that's why I have a lack of soul.
That's all right. We understand. Does this mean heavy, John?
No, this is our, this is our capacity.
Thanks, Julie.